Okay. Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, June 8, 2022, and this special meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in the council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding, also President or Counselors Kate McAllister, Andy Groth, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. Counselor Joe Aspero is absent, and we expect Counselor Deb Rule to arrive here any minute. We'll now rise for the Fudge Legions. Right. So the sole item on this evening's agenda is a council workshop on utility rates. Please note, as this is a council workshop and informational only, there will be no public comments at this time. There will be an opportunity for the public to comment on this topic at a future meeting. Now, you have the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton to go ahead and serve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to hand off to most of our team this today. In particular, Greg Lanning, our Utilities Director, and Angela Sanchez, Angie, who's our lead from the FCS group, and we've been working for several months now on revised rates and revisiting a reminder to council about our current water wastewater rates. We haven't done a rate study and really dug into all of our rates the way that we have been over the last six months for over 10 years. So we haven't had rate adjustments. We haven't, we haven't really done the deep dive on the rates at all and including looking at what have been the investments in the system over time and what that means for our rates. And this was, this is an important study for us, and you'll see it particularly as we look at the wastewater treatment system and a wastewater treatment plant. What does that look like for costs and how would we pay for that? As we've been going through this study, one, one decision we kind of made to break this up into pieces because it gets pretty complicated pretty quickly, and you'll hear that tonight, is first, we got into what our rates should be, and, and you'll see some proposed changes to both our enough or our cap fees as well as to our monthly rates. But a second phase of this that we haven't started yet and was in the initial presentation to council. So it will be a subsequent phase is actually doing a deep dive on our rate structures. And we determined that we would leave that for a second phase so that when we're talking about rate changes, we're comparing apples to apples when we're talking about rate changes. There will be in the future, and it may take us even a bit longer than what this has taken in the next phase to really look at restructuring, doing the equity analysis with our rate structure itself. And we can go moving forward with this in two different phases with looking at what our rates should be and then revisiting under those new rates, what the structure should be and what that would look like with changes in structure. If we were to do structure now, when we start talking about rate changes, we could tell you what a rate change looks like, but with a structure change happening simultaneously, it could be very different than what we present here. So we thought that this was the most transparent way for our citizens to understand and follow us through this process and understand the implications of changes with the rates and then do a deep dive into structure following that. So with that, I will turn it over to Greg and Angie, and Sarah will be part of this as well tonight.
Okay, I'm just gonna blow up right now. I think my fizzy water's gonna, oh, maybe not.
Mine's, at this point, it's a pretty quick handoff to Angie to bring up, you know, the, the process we've taken to get to this point in terms of rates. And so there'll be a slide or two that queues me up in particular to speak to any of the technical issues perhaps to digesting all those master plans we had done, recent master plans. And we've been fortunate because we've had at least three discussions on, in wastewater related to clogged arteries. And then, of course, over many years, you've heard about the wastewater treatment plant itself. So that's kind of the wastewater side of it, contained entirely within, you know, the city limits. And then the water side of it, we, we brought up what the water system itself can provide and to what extent. And there's limits, you know, to where the existing water system can supply water, especially on the northern boundaries. And I drew a couple of lines on the maps. You'll see that same map again. And so I'll speak to that one as well. But that, that's important to keep in mind, I think, you know, crosses jurisdictional boundaries into other towns and into the county as well. So it's slightly different in that sense. And so when we talk water, it's, you'll kind of hear some of those concepts and those limits and then what it takes to provide services outside of those current limits. So that'll be my role in this, and I can, I brought a couple of the stacks that you commented on. This isn't, you know, I never know which way the, the questions might go in terms of the technicalities of the water in sewer systems. But I'm, I hope I can answer most of those questions. It'll be a little bit of a, a whole, a repeat of what you've already heard on most of the systems. And so with that, I'll let Angie take over.
Okay. Well, thank you, and good evening to everyone. Again, my name's Angie Sanchez Vernash, Project Principal. I do have Broctasia with us remote, so if we again have any technical questions that she can needs to look things up. She's also here and available, but also a key project team member in terms of the results and findings that we've been working with staff on since, since we've seen you last. So the agenda that we've kind of developed for this evening is basically providing a quick background kind of where we've been since we last talked with you all earlier this year. We'll discuss against steady components. So what were the key study components that we scoped? Where are we in terms of what we're presenting this evening? And what were some of the key assumptions that went into the results that you'll also be seeing this evening for the water and sewer results? The focus, as Jennifer had mentioned, is on the revenue requirement, and that revenue requirement is basically establishing the overall revenue needs for each of the systems. And so for Idaho Code, essentially, it's basically states that each system should be self-supporting and that it must remain self-supporting when possible. So the rates that we charge need to be able to cover the costs that our particular utilities have, so no kind of cross subsidies occurring. We'll also talk about the new user facility fees, and so separate from revenue requirement, which is ongoing user fees. We're also going to talk about the new user facilities fees do not relate to current customers. They're only strictly related to growth-related or new customers. And then obviously want to make sure that we allow sufficient time for questions and discussion in terms of these particular findings that we have this evening. So in terms of background, really quickly, we had discussed rate setting fundamentals with council back in January and kind of provided some slides and framework for really what does a rate study look at? What are the key components and tasks that we're going to be completing? And really, what are we trying to do with each of those particular tasks? And what are we, what are we trying to look for? We have worked with staff since January quite extensively on a lot of the analytical components of the rate study. Thank you too again, staff, for assisting in the, the data request and amongst all the other things they have to do. So we appreciate their, their effort getting us what we need in order to compile this information. We have developed the financial forecast for each of the water and sewer utilities. And so again, we'll, we'll talk about that. And as Jennifer had mentioned, it has been over 10 years since we have completed, the city has completed the rate study. So that happened about 2009, 2010 time period. So it's been, it's been some time and it's timely in order to kind of take another external look at, at what's happening with each of the utilities. Again, we'll focus today on overall revenue needs for each of the utilities, focus on capital projects and funding because that is the significant impact that each of the utilities has, just being a utility system, and then the new user facility fee update. So in terms of how this all fits together, the key study components, when we talked about it in January, there was four major areas, and you can see the first two that are highlighted in green there, darker green, is really what we're going to be focusing on today. And essentially, the rate study components work upon each other. So we know one kind of builds a foundation, and once we get an answer there, then we can kind of start completing all of the others. The revenue requirement is that foundational piece, piece for the financial plan because it is establishing what are the overall revenue needs for each of the utilities. So not only indirect costs, but also direct costs of the utilities, capital needs, you know, everything that is required to run each of those systems, we include in this financial plan to ensure that we're able to meet our needs and can continue to provide service and reliable service over time.
So can I stop you there for a sec? Does that include operations because you have passive service analysis as well?
Yes.
How does?
So the revenue requirement, and we'll definitely dive into those, includes operating, so it's operating and maintenance cost, it's debt service, it's capital improvement planning, it's any obligation that the utility has, as well as financial metrics as well. So making sure we're meeting reserve levels that we have established in terms of policies, debt service coverage requirements. And so kind of all in, in terms of those financial obligations for each utility.
So how is the cost of service analysis distinguished from?
Cost of service, yeah, cost of, so I would say the revenue requirement is the big pie. So what is the overall need, cost of service and slices that pie as well? Based on that pie and the overall needs, how is that now going to be distributed to my residential class, commercial class, irrigation class, multifamily class? And so the pie doesn't change with cost of service. It's how we slice it and allocate it to the customer. And so once we find that answer to the revenue requirement, we'll then be able to complete cost of service. And then, as Jennifer had mentioned, rate structure, how are we going to actually collect the target revenue level from our customer groups? From a fixed charge, from a variable charge, do we need to change things up? And then the new user facility fee update is for new customers on the system. And so that is essentially guided by that 2015 Supreme Court ruling. So not as much change there because there really is a step, a set methodology that is in place for that particular charge, specific to your city, but specific methodology. So in terms of the sensitivities and priorities, so as we complete a rate study process, there are various different funding philosophies, spending priorities that each city has that are specific and unique to them. And so as we complete the rate study process, our job is to try to understand really where those particular priorities and policies really are in terms of this, the city of Sandpoint, and what you're trying to accomplish and advance forward. And so in January, we, we looked at this particular graphic and showed some generally some questions that, that come to play when we think about rates, rate studies. From growth pay for growth, you know, do we want less? Do we want more? This, the decisions that we make, how did that move that barometer on this particular scale? Did we move it to the less side or various different options that we provide you? Is it going to be move it to the more side? And so you'll see this graphic come up as we move out through the presentation to really identify and highlight when we bring various different options up, how does that affect this particular question for the city? Is it leaning you more towards less or leaning you more towards the more side in terms of that scale? And you all can then help us decide and inform us is, do we move it to the right piece? Or yeah, I want to maybe move it a little bit more to the other side. And so this is really just more of a graphic to help guide us in our future discussions. And as we bring it back with, for later to this evening, as we kind of get into more of the results, you'll kind of see how each of those kind of options is playing into each of these particular policy objectives. So diving into that first task that we're going to complete, the revenue requirement, financial plan. This particular task is developed over a multi-year time period. So we're actually looking at a 20-year time period. But we know, you know, the farther we go, the more of a crystal ball that's going to be. And so really, what we're trying to do is we look at this big picture, future, to see if there's any bumps in the road that we need to be, be planning for today. But really, the focus is likely going to be in the more three to six-year timeframe. And so when we look at the results, we're really focusing on that six-year timeframe. And again, the council can decide if it needs to be shorter than that even. But we wanted to, to give you a good picture of what that, what that looks like. It does look at indirect, excuse me, direct costs, like operating costs, debt service, capital expenditures, et cetera, but also infuses the financial plan with the fiscal policies. So what type of fund balances do we need to be retaining? Are we complying with our debt service coverage requirements for many outstanding bonds that we have that, that we need to achieve? How are we funding system reinvestment? Do we have a policy for system reinvestment in terms of, you know, wanting to fund depreciation expense? And how are we aligning with that particular policy objective? So indirect and direct type of components that are included in the financial plan that the capital funding plan is related but separate simply because it can have such a significant impact on each of the utilities. You know, we're talking multimillion dollar requirements or needs out there. And so on an annual basis, we're really ident, trying to identify what are our overall obligations? What do we have internally in terms of funding to be able to pay for those obligations? And what type of external funding do we have in order to meet those needs as well? So how do we execute this capital plan so that we can maintain system reliability and sustainability over time? When we look at the financial plan, we first look at it through the lens of current rates. So we're not assuming any type of rate adjustments when we go in there. We're saying, what are you currently generating for today in terms of rates? What are your overall obligations? And are those current rates sufficient to meet our needs? Only after we look at that, we will evaluate if a rate implementation strategy needs to be developed. So, so any type of rate increase that need to be developed because of the future costs that we have. But we first look at it always with, what are you currently generating today and is that sufficient? Only after that particular point, if it does look like we have needs, then we will craft an annual rate strategy along with yourselves and staff that is palatable to you and the community to figure out, you know, how do we fund these things? What's palatable? What can we, what can we achieve in terms of our overall needs as well as, you know, needing to also construct some various different key projects? Some of the key assumptions that we have in terms of the study, and this is going to start setting the foundation for some of the more technical pieces of the study. So again, the 20-year time period, but the focus is going to be 2022 through 2028. In the rate study process, revenue is extremely important, and the revenue forecast is extremely important in terms of what we are anticipating receiving in the future. And so we did take a very detailed look at your 2021 customer statistics to ensure that we are aligning with the revenues that you had said came in from those statistics. And so we do this validation process to ensure that as we move out over time, we're comfortable that we have the units that are actually meeting the amount of revenues that if we apply a certain amount of growth, then those particular revenues are going to be, be escalated appropriately. If we change the rate structure, we know that those units that we have have aligned. So we should be able to, you know, project appropriately with any new rate structure that we, we have coming into play. And so we did take a very detailed look at your customer statistics to begin forming that baseline for our revenue. From that baseline revenue, we then applied various different growth rates. For this particular process, we looked at a number of different documents and through discussions with staff and really some of the plans that were available out there, we base this on the 2021 Water System Comprehensive Plan. So that 2.8% growth rate that you see there is essentially using that water plan growth rate that is, that is available and out there for consistency. We also used it for the sewer utility as well. So we are looking at about 2.8% growth rate. Now, is that the appropriate? That, you know, because of the growth that is happening, and we have a slide on that in terms of the future growth and kind of what could potentially happen. Really, what we can say there is the important part is that we, you know, we took a, a document that, from your water system plan, again, to try to be consistent. And so we, we've taken that document based on other studies so that as we move out over time, we're being consistent with all the studies that you're having developed. This is going to be an important key component to, to monitor over time. And this is why we really highlight this toolset is that if you see growth changing, whether that be down or up, that we can go into that particular toolset, financial plan, and adjust those growth rates. And you can see how that impacts your, your financials. Can we hold to the plan or because of what we're doing, maybe we change it? Maybe this, you know, we can contract some other rate strategy that we thought we, we may need. So this is a very dynamic process intended to give you a tool to be able to have the flexibility to change with that.
Is that 2.8%? Does that describe volume of service provided or like customer base? Is that population growth or is that amount of water we're serving and amount of sewer we're treating?
It's more population and demand. Yeah. So, so it's really what we're looking for in this particular rate study is customer, customers who are paying utility rates. And so, you know, we want accounts, yes, it's based on population, you know, loosely in terms of how you get there. But ultimately, we want to ensure that if there's, you know, 2.5 people who make up that one household and that one household is paying one bill, we want to recognize that one bill, not the 2.5. Okay, so really trying to make sure we're aligning.
That was based on our internal analysis. So we had Linda Heiss, who was our grants and performance manager. We worked for months, it was Linda, myself, Michelle with utilities filling. Sarah was involved in these conversations, really doing a deep dive analysis, looking at what has been our historical data as well as what is our current recent history relative to utility use and number of hookups and where we have land available. So that's where we, and where is the possible growth potentially into our ACI? And that's where we came up with those numbers. It's a pretty good science. It's something more current than us relying on census numbers where we could actually get into our own, our own data and do our analysis. Cities around us doing, basically using the same methodology that we used, our like city of Raptorum, who's also experiencing a lot of growth and able to look at their utility numbers instead of relying on participation and census and then their projections and really historical data.
I think it's worth commenting, though, the 2.8% growth. I mean, we've got a lot of development that's in the pipeline now that'll be coming online, you know, by 2024. And, you know, we could hit that 2.8, I'm sure, easily. But then we're also in a position where you were really seeing pretty complete infill within the city in, in terms of large projects. So that, that 2.8% development through 2024 includes a lot of relatively high-density projects. And we're, we're not going to have the land resources in the future to be able to continue that kind of growth. But as Jennifer mentioned, to hit that 2.4, I think it's going to require that the city look at annexation and, and growing into the ACI because otherwise, we're just looking at, you know, parcel by parcel infill growth or ADUs and that kind of, that kind of growth. And I, you know, we're not going to hit that number with, with that kind of, with, with only that kind of infill growth. Just important to consider.
I just have one question. It's a little off, but so you said that this is all very fluid. So will this be coming in front of us, kind of like other fees come in front of us to be readjusted on a biannual or annual basis as opposed to how we've never seen this for 10 years, kind of thing?
That's a great question.
Responsibility?
Yes. So through this process, we will be handed off a model, and that was part of what we'd included in our, our fee when we went out with this too. So we'll have an annual model where Sarah will have it, and we can plug in what we've got happening on a real-time basis relative to debt, what we have on a real-time basis relative to capital projects that are completed. So what is the value of our infrastructure? And then that gets calculated into the rates rather than using just a straight CPI because that doesn't necessarily apply to what's happening within our utilities. So you see that methodology used sometimes, but in this case, we'll actually have a model that we continue to apply. You're going to see that moving forward too because that becomes really important, particularly on the wastewater side. And as we start to wrestle through the question in this says, and this is going to be direction we're asking for council moving forward tonight. And you'll see we lay out with options. Do we move forward with a rate structure that is based on traditionally how we faced our rate structure where growth is paying the cost of growth? Or do we modify? And do we believe that growth should be shared amongst all of the users in the system? And where on that spectrum do we fall? So we're going to be talking a lot about that tonight.
So in terms of the expenses that we're using for each of the utilities, we are using the approved fiscal year 2022 budget. So we'll use that for that 2022, and then apply various escalation factors moving forward to get to a future time period in terms of our projections there. If we are including any debt in any of the scenarios, if we mention revenue bonds, we're looking at a 20-year term, 5% interest, 1% issuance cost. DQ loan is slightly longer term, 30 years, lower interest rate, two and a half, and a similar issuance cost. And so again, those are, are, will, will depend on this, on the scenario that has been discussed. We're also managing around various fiscal policies, those fiscal policies being operating reserves, minimum 90 days of operating and maintenance expenses there in terms of, you know, wanting to keep that in, in reserve. Targeting depreciation level funding for rate-funded system reinvestment. So again, what can your rate support of that rates-funded system reinvestment? And so historically, the city has tried to target depreciation expense, so ensuring that we're continuing to, to meet those particular levels. And then because we have outstanding debt, we are required to target a 1.40 or to show up on holders that we can maintain a 1.40 debt service coverage requirement.
So with the system reinvestment piece, are we basically making sure that we are keeping up with what our maintenance costs are going to be over time for our system?
We're trying to, with that, yes, refers to. We're trying to make sure that you have funding for that. So, so a lot of times depreciation sometimes doesn't mean replacement costs. So you might have something that was put in place 30 years ago, and it costs, you know, a million dollars. And that same particular project might cost $2 million today. So we're at least giving a mechanism to fund replacement, but it may not necessarily fund all of their.
Correct. But we are thinking, you know, just kind of reflecting upon our road system and.
Yes. And, and this is one of the areas that the city has been doing a really good job of. This is usually the piece that is missing from a lot of the rate studies that we, that we look at. As, as we'd mentioned, population growth is, is an important piece as well as really just, you know, what's occurring. And so this particular slide, we, we kind of put together to show kind of what's happening in the nation, but really focused on the area of, of, of really the northwest area in Idaho. And so as you can see, the red really represents the highest growth that the nation is experiencing. And so you can see Idaho essentially, and the Panhandle is basically all solid red. And so we're, we're seeing tremendous amounts of growth, which does put some pressure on those particular cities that are trying to provide service and meet that particular growth and the infrastructure requirements associated with that. And so again, be, just being sure and, and making sure that we are continuing to monitor, continue to make sure that we, we are including any changes from the assumptions that have been made, the rate study in the future. Should we, we be seeing more or less, you know, growth that, that is occurring that might change the plan?
This slide probably looks familiar to council members. I sent you, all of you, the PowerPoints from Sandpoint, an hour at the, at the recent Anovia Summit. And this was taken directly out of Grant Forsythe, the economic analysis for Vista Utilities Group. And in here, he was talking about overall population growth around, across the country that we're only at a 0.1% population growth as a nation. But what we're seeing and our residents are feeling is this in-migration that's happening across the country. And I thought it was helpful to throw this in as a slide again to kind of confirm where we got to those numbers of the 2.4 and the 2.2%. Historically, what we have seen for year-over-year growth in our area is about 1.5% growth. So this kind of confirms what it is that our citizens are feeling. And also for us, for our operations, what we're experiencing currently in the utilities relative to demand. So we are taking all of this economic data into consideration as we're kind of looking again at, from a staff standpoint and preparing for these, how are we balancing growth, paying for growth? And what do we have for recommendations to the council as we move forward? So you'll see that again tonight.
Okay, so now we're going to start moving into the findings. So we're going to talk about the water revenue requirement first. And before that, you've seen this slide, it sounds like, before to set the stage. I want to turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, Angie. I appreciate that. So we're in the water area, and so the next few slides will talk about costs related to water. And Angie's also mentioned what is the profound effect of capital expense on the rate study in the most in particular. And so you've, you know, I've modified the, the drawing that you saw before. Before you saw the, the very northerly line, the one on top there is the limits of the, the existing water service area. There are limits also in that line related to pressure and volume and fire flow. So we need to, there's some physical improvements we need to do to the water system and investments in order to grow north of that particular line, north of the northernmost line. The line on the west or to the left generally follows the railroad tracks. And so expansion beyond that, under the tracks, et cetera. We, we recently took a line, a water line, a large water line under Gooby, you know, or in the Gooby area. And as an example, and it was expensive and it took a, you know, money to get it under the tracks. But it now it makes available water for future growth and expansion into the, what is essentially our ACI. So when we're talking about that westernmost line along the railroad tracks, that's Sandpoint's ACI area of city impact. And then I just simply completed the circle, you know. Obviously, we're not going to serve into the lake at all, but I went ahead and wrote or drew the line around that to more accurately describe what is our existing water service area. So in general, we can serve all water within that area. There's some infilling growth, you know, and so you'll see a smattering of red projects and yellow projects. And I have a complete, this came out of the 2021 master plan, so very recently completed for the water system. And it identified each of those red and yellow lines, red being priority lines, yellow being less priority. And I have a list of all those and, you know, some 30 or 40 projects, for instance. And those two, each of our master plans. And those two, each of our master plans projected projects over the twenty years. So it's very, it comports very much with our rate study timelines as well, related to looking at twenty years as to what our capital needs are. So it was really nice. So alls I had to do when I got here was simply, you know, distribute what was already in the master plan into the rate study. So it's it's very much consistent with those master plans that we had done. So therefore, you'll see in subsequent slides, talk options related to within the existing water service area and then expenses, rates, NUCS related to projects outside of that. And this very much represents growth pain for growth. And so we can refer back to this drawing if we need to or projects related to that. But when you hear option one and option two and growth related discussions, this is in the water service area is what we're talking about.
I want to mention it because we also have two water districts, one to the west and one to the north of of our existing water service area there. And and of course, we supply that water and and we can anticipate growth there as well. But in terms of rates, it's just a bulk rate that we're getting, right? So can you speak briefly as to, you know, to what extent and how that can affect the rates? And maybe now is not the time, but just that's something we didn't really talk about it. And I just want to consider that as well.
Sure, sure. And so in in terms of the revenue received, that is included as a as a revenue source in terms of, you know, what we anticipate that to be, I believe we use the same growth factor in terms of, you know, what we anticipate that that particular revenue would be. So kind of similar growth within those particular districts. In terms of costs, you already have the cost included in there. So really, it's just making sure that we distribute those costs. So that would be a cost of service. That'll definitely be a cost of service discussion in terms of are we setting that rate appropriately for those particular districts, that bulk rate? And that 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 will be addressed in the cost of service. So as Greg has alluded to, when we look at the water utility, we are going to be discussing two funding options or two options. The first one being we fund all capital costs associated and known for the water utility, inclusive of the system expansion for new development. And those particular projects have been identified in to the tune of about sixteen point three million dollars for the two thousand twenty two through two thousand twenty eight time period. As we kind of look at that barometer that we said we would kind of be bringing back, what you'll see is it's kind of shifting more to the less in terms of growth pay for growth. Now, why that shift is more to the left is that we're really kind of lumping these all in. So we're not necessarily differentiating and and identifying that those particular customers who are driving those particular costs are going to pay for them. Those costs all really are just becoming a system cost. This is what we need in order on the system for the various different service areas that we are trying to serve. And so that's why kind of leaning towards the the less in terms of that that barometer and that scale. Option two excludes those system expansions for new development capital. And there again, so we're going to take out that sixteen point three million. That's why that particular scale then moves more towards the more is that we're anticipating that those particular projects are removed from the overall total capital cost in option two. And they'll have to be a different funding source secured for those particular projects if they're going to move forward. So whether it be a direct, you know, funding or some other type of grants, loans, local improvement districts, you know, some other subfunding source besides the utility revenue and rates will be supporting that.
So just to be clear, if growth isn't paying for growth, then we're paying for growth.
The total system, yeah, grades.
Existing customers are paying for future growth.
So, yeah, absolutely. And revenue will be coming in from NUCS, but it's not really saying, I know there's sixteen point three million dollars and I'm going to take that sixteen point three and make sure that those particular customers are paying for that. It's kind of being put in with everything else and kind of melding into that one system. Okay, any questions on those two? Like that's thinking, yeah, it's it's it'll probably, you may have more questions and feel free.
I mean, total layman here, right? Like, we represent the common people and we have to communicate this to the common people and and we are common people. But the what what we're really saying there is if we go with that option one, it's saying that we're asking our citizens to make investments now that will enable for more make make standpoint more attractive and the regions we serve more attractive for developers in the future.
Sure. And you'll get more customers. And so you'll have more economies of scale. So ultimately, the more customers, the more you can spread those rates over rather than, you know.
Whereas option two is saying, look, if you live here now, we're asking you to pay for the service that you're getting now. But developers who want to come in the future are going to have to pay for the development.
Pay more in there.
Yeah. And the future residents will have to pay for that through. But then again, the the Supreme Court ruling with NUCS said that you can't pay for future development through NUCS.
Right.
So the the question remains, how, where do those costs, who bears those costs of future development if we're not making investments now that enable it?
Yeah, and you're and and enough and we'll get into the the specifics of enough, but just in general, the enough is being valued at today's dollars. And so the customers that are coming in that are new connecting to the system, you are, depending on the the approved rate, you will be collecting an appropriate enough that's basically valued at the investment of today's, you know, up to today's investment. So can't look into the future, but it's saying over the past and up to this particular point, this is the infrastructure in the ground. And this is the value of that infrastructure in the ground at today's dollars. So you will be getting money from new connections. The problem with new connections is it doesn't come in all at once, right? And so it's going to come in over time. So that means the existing rate payers kind of have to front it. They have to kind of front them dollars to get those projects funded, incorporated and going. And then over time, you're going to be getting, you know, some of these NUCS.
So are there like economies of scale arguments for investing now for future growth as opposed to piecemeal? Like one project at a time? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. And we, you know, when we first looked at this particular rate study, we had a lower growth rate in there. And then we, you know, settled on, okay, let's look at the various different plans that have been developed. Let's have various different discussions. And so we did settle at the two point eight. We can run alternative scenarios. Is that whatever our growth rate was even higher in terms of, you know, what's coming in? And so it is a direct, absolute direct impact on your rates is the more customers you have coming in and connecting, more revenue you have coming in. And so that's going to help spread those overall operating costs over those customers.
Good.
The other piece to consider, and you especially are going to see this as we get to the water model. Our water utility and when we were going out and looking at going to the bond market, we came forward with our double A rating from the bond market. One thing that they noted was it was the financial stability of our funds and the amount of cash that we had on hand in our fund balance. When we start going down the path of looking at upfronting the cost for development, your tipping point in this also becomes, can you fund your system upgrades, your system improvements for cash? Which under the option one, you're going to see we have cash on hand, we can fund it cash. If we start going with or our option two, our option one, if we're saying that our existing system is going to fund this investment for to support new growth, then it also means your existing system has to take on debt to do that. So that's another factor for you all to consider.
So my question would be, if you were to acquire more areas of impact that's outside city limits and annex pieces, then how do we incorporate the long term costs of that infrastructure that then will become ours? And isn't that a pretty big piece of the pie? So where does that figure in as we look at our options? To spread growth among more customers? If it's outside of current city infrastructure? Because ultimately, the developer puts that infrastructure in from what I understand. But then, once the sign off happens, the city becomes responsible for all that infrastructure and the long term costs of the maintenance of it. Or is that later down?
No, that's a great question. And I'm going to, you know, answer it more or less based on more my history than, you know, real active discussion with Angie in particular. You have to remember, when when we allow a development in, they have to install all utilities as well. And so a lot of the system expansion is born in terms of capital costs, initial capital costs by the developer themselves. In addition to that, they're buying into capacity that the system, the existing system already has. So there's really, they pay twice, not twice, but for two different items. They pay for the installation of their utilities and then they buy into existing capacity.
And that's the NUCS.
That's correct. And so they're paying NUCS in addition to installing those utilities. Yeah, it's either developers or down the road, the home builder or the, you know, the actual people building the house with the connection fee related to that. There then are more regional projects, you know, and in some of those cases, you know, we need additional storage for emergency operations and, you know, and some of those then fall back on existing rate payers, you know, for good reason, you know, as we expand. And but you have to keep in mind that that now includes all these new customers as well. So there are some regional customers, certain some regional projects rather, that, you know, take on a little bit different spin, quite frankly, and aren't as easily defined, you know, as far as, you know, for instance, we have a need for a certain amount of storage up on the hill even today, you know, more storage than the two tanks we have. And we need to figure out how to pay for that. A lot of that's borne by or should be borne by existing rate pairs, for instance. So there is a little bit of that blend also in terms of how existing rate pairs paid towards reserves and how those more regional projects are also built. A lot of those do qualify, you know, for DEQ funding as well and may have some grant funding. But it gets a little bit mucky as far as some regional projects. I'm not suggesting that we have too many of those here. There is a pretty good line as to what existing, what exists and what future rates or future expansion looks like.
So is it figured into where we're going to be twenty or thirty years down the road? After that's expanded and the developer's gone and then the city takes on all the maintenance of the water pipes, et cetera, and so forth, because every foot of pipe is quite costly. And the further you reach out with an area of city impact, the more you become responsible for. And then density plays into that, because if you expand in a in a light density, you're still running the same foot cost per pipe and you might not have very many rate players. So that is more what I'm getting at with with how we're configuring these different things for not today. But are is the city going to take on too much and then be stuck in the road situation we're in?
There's a couple of discussions there for O and M, of course, you know, and future maintenance, that's built into existing rates. And so existing rate pairs will pay for that. And of course, the future, these new systems you're talking about have rate pairs that are paying for that. The variable related to density is a good one, because obviously, you know, more dense development should be lower costs economically. And there is a good discussion related to development of any utilities out into very rural areas where it takes a long ways to get the utility to them and very few hookups to pay for that. Now, that is an issue ultimately. And, you know, ultimately, that's blended amongst all rate pairs. But we know, you know, there's a differential related to, is it adequate? And is it being, you know, we do not break up rates as far as I know, related to, you know, those kinds of differentials related to density.
Okay, so I need to get into some of the numbers now. So just a summary of the capital expenditures that we were looking at for the time period two thousand twenty two through twenty eight. There's about fifty six percent that we've identified as new development projects, so to the tune of about sixteen point three million dollars. There are existing system improvements that are also needed, about forty four percent or about twelve point seven million dollars. And so we kind of listed some of the capital projects there in terms of what we're looking at for that particular time period. And you can kind of see some of the numbers.
I think it's important to note again, too, as Greg mentioned, this isn't an exact science. There are improvements that happen that benefit all the system users, but they predominantly maybe benefit new development, new users coming onto the system. So kind of the qualifier that we used in looking through the projects, and it was Greg really going through these and working with our master plan consultants was for each of these predominant, for each of these projects, who predominantly is benefiting from the projects? It's not to say that everyone wouldn't benefit, but predominantly who is benefiting? And that's where we kind of drew the line between what was new development growth and what was existing users rate pairs.
It was, yeah, the original master plan had, you know, a little descriptor on it. So there's more detailed information related to each of these projects. And in particular, there was a descriptor that talked or spoke to growth and development. So it was relatively easy to pull out the initial projects. And then there were some that were just, you know, fifty fifty, quite frankly, as to whether or not, you know, they benefited existing rate pairs or benefited new growth or equally, that kind of thing.
For illustration, can you give us an example of a fifty fifty project?
I will. We'll run back to that map if we can. I know it's a very small scale. But you'll see one big red line along the railroad tracks up there, pretty much where the one arrow is right above existing. It's called P seventeen. Yeah, thank you. And you can tell, you know, if I got water from the source, from the water treatment plant, it continued, we already have a very large line up to the beginning of that red line. And that's the continuing of, I think, a fourteen inch, a very large water line up along the railroad tracks and then it runs up north. Well, at the very end, you know, you can say, well, if I opened up a big artery like that, you bet at the very end of that, there's going to be a lot of water for projects up to the north. And all along that red line, there's development infill happening as well that would, you know, as well as existing low pressures and low volumes within the system, that would benefit from that project also. In twenty ten, oh, I don't, I can't, there was a discussion of splitting those costs, because that project was identified way back then even, you know, amongst existing rate pairs or amongst, or is it just purely growth for growth? In the end, it's outside the the existing service area. It's that cost of that project entirely is in the growth base for growth category right now. But that's a very good example, P seventeen along tracks there.
And just for perspective, I'm guessing that's sort of behind the wheel and all the way up, like where the coffee roaster is and such.
It is. Yeah, yeah, that's a very good point.
Okay, so now when we bring all of kind of the pieces together, so the budgets, the anticipated revenue that we had validated, as well as, you know, applying growth rates, et cetera. The table to the left hand side here shows that kind of the range of where are these various different key components are are resulting. So existing rate revenue, so again, without a rate increase, just strictly looking at what you're bringing in today. We have about four point two to four point nine million dollars within that test period timeframe. Our operating and maintenance expenses are running about three point two to four million. We do have existing debt service of about nine hundred and seventy three thousand dollars on the water utility and it's an annual payment. And then based on our twenty nine million dollar capital C capital needs, we are essentially required in order to execute the capital plan as stated, required to take it meeting, I shouldn't say required, needing to take in about eight million dollars in revenue bonds in terms of debt service. And that is broken out between two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty seven in terms of the timing of the need for those particular projects. You can see in the table to the right hand side there that two thousand twenty three and twenty four are really some of the higher CIP years. And then it kind of, it kind of starts low, kind of ramps up a little bit, and then it kind of starts trailing down as you go out into the future. Those are, you know, some project related to two million gallon tank and some various different water lines and in water main project work that you're seeing in two thousand twenty three and twenty four. What we have looked at is, well, what are the funding sources available for this? And so again, before identifying the need for revenue bonds, we are using about, you know, thirty six percent to fund from reserves to fund the CIP, direct rate funding, so that amount that we're collecting, you know, from ongoing rates that's able to to pay for system reinvestment is securing about twenty one percent of the funding. And then enough revenue is about fifteen percent. And so after all of those internal resources have been optimized, we then look at, again, in order to execute the capital program of twenty nine million, requiring about eight million dollars in external funding in order to meet the needs of this particular utility. And this is the option one, which is all capital funding included, so everything all in. The next slide is really just a graphical annual representation of of what we're kind of looking at here. And again, we have two thousand twenty two through two thousand twenty eight. The bars represent the annual obligations. And so you can see there that the cash operating expenses are in the kind of the brown, dark brown there, existing debt services in the orange. We then have rate funded system. We then have rate-funded system reinvestment or depreciation funding that we're talking about. Further down the line, you can see two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-seven. You have blue, which represents the new debt service then being added to the overall annual obligation in those particular years. What the solid line represents is total existing revenue without a rate increase. And so again, we want to evaluate where we are today with our existing funds and revenues and what our obligations are in the future and do we have sufficient funding? As you can see, as we go out over time, our revenues are not able to keep up with our obligations. Again, really due to a lot of the, the increase in that system reinvestment funding that is needed to help fund the capital projects as well as the eight million dollars that is needed in new debt service to pay for those particular capital projects as well. What that translates to is about a six point five percent increase in those first three years, two thousand twenty-three through twenty-five, slowly reducing five point five in two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven and then three percent two thousand twenty-eight. To a typical sample residential monthly bill, you're looking at about two dollars and forty cents to two dollars and seventy-five cents per month increase in each of those years. In order, again, to fund that option one, all-in capital projects. The next option is option two. And here is where we're excluding the capital for new development system expansion. And so in terms of what that means is the changes would be that we would eliminate the sixteen point three million in capital from two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-eight that has been identified as new development system expansion that also reduces or we avoid the need for eight million dollars in new debt funding in that particular time period. And so no new debt is now needed if we're not including those particular projects. It does mean that additional separate funding will be required for those projects to advance forward. But what we're looking at in terms of that revised option to rate path is three percent increases per year over the time period that we're looking at for that six-year time period. Again, typical bill impact is about a dollar twelve to a dollar nineteen for that.
And, um, so, you know, obviously, the work we're, before us here now is a rate study and we're considering future rates. But if we chose option two and we looked at that sixteen point three million new growth capital paid for by new growth, then is, is it outside of the scope of your work to help us? Are you still going to help us kind of develop a plan for capitalizing that? Those costs or is that outside of the scope of?
So if you chose option two?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would, with each of these plans, depending on what was selected, we move forward with that particular path.
But not in terms of, of that's outside of the scope for FCS, for example, to look into impact fees, look into grants, look into those different types of funding sources. It's also specifically noted in here that jurisdictional authority starts to become a big element with this. We're really unique in how we operate, particularly our water utility system, because we are serving jurisdictions that are outside of our city jurisdictional city limits. So that goes into, uh, Greg's field usually at the front end of, okay, today you're putting on your utility hat and you're thinking not just of City Sandpoint, now you are in charge of this water utility, which is multi-jurisdictional. With that said, we operate in that capacity, a little bit like a water district, but we aren't a water district. We are run by a single jurisdiction. So when it comes to that other funding sources, when we get into the west area and expansion beyond the tracks into our ACI and what we would do with funding outside of rates, if we go with this option, that's really a City of Sandpoint discussion around, you know, do we look at LID, CIDs, do we look at grants, do we, do we look at impact fees for that? Do we look at extraordinary impact fees? So we would look at all those different options. When we start getting north, so we're into Kootenay and Ponderay, those funding mechanisms and decisions about those funding mechanisms actually become those other jurisdictions' decisions and not ours. We wouldn't collect those fees. We wouldn't be the one applying for those grants. If that be the case, that would be the other jurisdictions. And then the revenue would come into those jurisdictions and via an agreement with us and it's passed to City of Sandpoint as the water utility to fund the water utility. But those decisions would be the other jurisdictions' utilities, their decisions. So.
How common or uncommon is that?
We have an extremely uncommon system, the way that we have it typically. You typically, the typical models are, and Fonda and I had a long conversation about this and Greg will have probably more to add to. Typically, when you see multi-jurisdictional, what you see in those scenarios are either a, um, utility district. So now representatives from each of those entities as part of an independent utility districts, think of like a fire district, for example, is kind of the easiest way, I think, to think about it. But there, I, and I'm sure historically, there were many reasons we didn't go that way because there's many reasons why a jurisdiction would not want something as significant as water and decisions around water not being within their jurisdiction to control because it's directly related to what you're doing with growth and a lot of other things. On the other side, what you commonly see with other jurisdictions is if you have one jurisdiction, so a good example, and we did tour, some of you were on the tour, we toured down in Post Falls, the wastewater treatment plant. So Post Falls, the city has the wastewater treatment plant and they are serving surrounding jurisdictions through their wastewater treatment. And you're going to see us talk about this a little bit too. Um, but in that model, they treat the other cities as wholesale users. And so those cities own the infrastructure within their cities. And so kind of like when we're doing the rural water utility of districts, so Northside, Edelweiss or Seringa, it's more of that kind of model. We don't have that, we kind of quasi have that model and I think a lot of where we are in our scenario is just relative to what our size was as this was evolving and we're serving other jurisdictions that are very small in size, didn't have the capacity to own infrastructure, manage utilities with us being the largest of the cities in Bonner County. So we evolved in a way that is very different than anywhere else around the state. And anywhere else, most anywhere else, it's, I'm sure there's other places that operate like we do, but it's very unique.
What do either, do either one of those two cities have anything to say about what we're talking about here? Because it, maybe I'm, I can wait and ask this question later, but I'm, I'm I'm curious as to what Kootenay and Ponderay have to say about a conversation like this.
I think that would be through, um, jurisdictional, uh, agreements. So, um, that we probably want to segue for another conversation.
So in terms of water, so the two options that we discussed and some of the differences, how does that rank in terms of the funding philosophy that we talked about at, at the very beginning? Growth pay for growth, option one, uh, again, because here we're considering the one system approach and not differentiating projects. It moves a little bit more towards the less side in terms of growth pay for growth. Option two, a bit more to, to the more, simply because again, you're, you're differentiating projects, you're specifically identifying, these are the costs and you have a different funding and direct funding mechanism for those particular capital projects. When it comes to the next two, replacement reserve funding, so depreciation funding or smoothing rate impacts over time, relatively similar, you know, not one and over the other, they, they rank fairly similarly. The last one, funding capital with cash versus debt, the option one. Again, because we have a need for eight million dollars of bond funding, it's going towards the less because we're doing less with cash and more with debt. The other, in terms of option two, is trending more towards the more, simply because we are no longer needing to take out debt to meet those needs. In terms of a bill comparison, so we were always asked to provide a bill comparison and what other jurisdictions are are charging, I always caution with these particular comparisons because they really are apples and oranges. We do not know how the other utilities are running their systems, how their, you know, sustainability, et cetera, what they're actually doing and planning. So again, we did provide that here. The sandpoint rate, uh, at the bottom, there is thirty-seven thirty on existing and they're on the tan kind of bars to differentiate kind of what the sandpoint numbers are. And then it turns up a slightly kind of to the middle of the pack. And this is for that single family rate comparison.
Okay, quick question. Those balls are asking, portaling, all less than, well, half or less than what the typical rate pair pays in standpoint. Is that economies of scale? Is that because of the density down there, the amount of ratepayers? Or is that, do they have such a more efficient water delivery system than we do?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's more efficient water delivery. I mean, I haven't, haven't looked at their operations, so I can't necessarily tell you. I think economies of scale definitely helps, but sometimes they're just different systems and we're not sure how they're funding depreciation.
One thing I would note for that is I know Post Falls is in a rate study or getting ready to go into a rate study right now. So, um, I believe that, and, and that was, I think, one of the downsides with this slide is we're comparing, trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison because we always get asked for this, but on the other side, um, keep in mind that these rates have been adopted at different times. So you're looking at a post-fall, falls rate that is going to be an older rate, they're going into rate study now, so you're most likely going to see a change.
Just fundamentally, too, another thing that, that is, you know, a disadvantage for Sandpoint in terms of cost efficiency is that, you know, basically we have a duplicate system, right? We've got a lake plant and we've got a sand creek plant. So, um, the other thing is we're treating surface water, so it's, of course, a higher level of treatment and it's more and at a greater cost than, um, say like a, a well, for instance. So those are a couple of really fundamental factors that, that make sandpoints rates higher than maybe compared to other jurisdictions.
But the treatment of the water is more environmentally better, right? Than not.
I.
Like well water, what Shelby just said.
The, the only treatment in general for groundwater is chlorination. And so you got, you know, a large pump at a certain depth. You bring it up to the surface, you chlorinate it and you distribute it. So it really simplifies it versus either a filtration plant, you know, through all the process it goes through or even our sander plant with the, you know, going through the, uh, the, uh, sand media. Those are far more expensive and, um, you're looking at different constituents too, in terms of geology and these kinds of things that exist on, on the surface that don't generally exist in groundwater.
So now moving on to sewer, the, um, kind of the, how water was presented will be very similar to sewer in terms of what we'll be looking at. So in terms of sewer, we also had two funding options available here. So we have the wastewater treatment plant is scheduled to be fully replaced by two thousand twenty-seven to two thousand thirty timeframe. The estimated cost for replacement is about sixty-four point four million dollars. And so the two really different options there are conventional revenue bond funding. And so again, just you being able to secure that to the market. Option two is the, having the ability to secure a low-interest loan for the particular funding of that treatment plant with the possibility of some grant or loan forgiveness. Obviously, an ideal situation, if we can secure the lower interest fund loan, but we do also want to ensure that we give you the full range of the possibilities, again, kind of the, the bookends of, of what this could possibly be. So we have two options for review. We are also, may have the opportunity to partner with Kootenay-Ponderay Sewer District in terms of, you know, providing them sewer treatment. That particular scenario obviously is, is something that would need to be approached recently. It may not happen in the short term, I have, may happen a little bit longer down the road in terms of those particular discussions. And so the option there is we are assuming that option two, the low-interest loan scenario will be reviewed with and without KPST. And so, you know, sort of, sort of that particular scenario, what happens if we went it on our own versus if we actually were able to develop some type of partnership agreement? What would that look like? Again, kind of looking at economies of scale, talk a little bit more about the economies of scale, what would that do to the potential impacts? Loan forgiveness, obviously, when we're, we start talking about DEQ loans, they, they do favor partnerships, regionalization type of, type of approaches. And so, uh, we wanted to, again, provide counsel with an option of, of considering that particular option, should that be able to move forward.
Did regionalization come up before?
So, yeah, if I can speak to this for a, a couple of minutes. So again, in these two options, while we've noted the opportunity through DEQ for grant and loan forgiveness, we don't know enough about that right now. And, uh, so these two scenarios don't calculate in, uh, grants and/or loan forgiveness in these scenarios. You'll see the DEQ is a better scenario, but I want to assure counsel on the other side working with DEQ, we are actively doing that. We have the regional head of DEQ up here about, what, three weeks ago? And, uh, the mayor and Greg and I met with him with, um, one of his engineers very familiar with this area. And, uh, that meeting was coordinated for us by the governor's office. Um, so we raised it at that level with the governor, we are, we are engaged in conversations at that level with concern at begin about the, the cost of wastewater treatment plant and the ability of our local residents and with a ratepayer pool, the size that we have the ability to pay for that. So looking at any ARPA dollars, build back dollars, all the infrastructure dollars that are coming there, we are there, um, loudly with DEQ right now, raising our hands and raising these, um, funding challenges for, for this area with them. Following that meeting, we have been, um, advised by DEQ. They were pleased to hear that we're moving forward with this rate study and we hopefully will have new, uh, rates adopted going into this fall as part of our rate adoption with the budget and that puts us in a position to be competitive for, um, their low-interest funding as well as grant forgiveness. In fact, we've been encouraged to get our application in this fall. But having current rates becomes really important for our competitiveness and ability to do so. So that's why moving through this exercise and, and really getting our rates updated is extremely important. With Kootenay-Ponderay Sewer District, we have been having meetings and conversations. It's kind of been in fits and spurts a bit because we both kind of have our own pieces going. But we have been meeting with the Kootenay-Ponderay Sewer District Board off and on for at least the last year, talking about this as well. So they are looking at options, they're in rate study too with FCS, that's one of the reasons. We're also, both of us working with FCS so they can look at both sides of this. And, um, so they are also looking at what are the options and what are the costs from Kootenay-Ponderay Sewer District side? And, um, in fact, our most recent conversation with one of the uh, district board members has been in the last week and, um, about scheduling a joint meeting again and DEQ coming up for that meeting to discuss possibilities and what it means for competitiveness of funding, hopefully within the next month. So DEQ has agreed to come back up for the meeting, have that conversation. They have confirmed with us again that that type of partnership, there's greater opportunities for the whole, both systems, the whole kind of new system for greater loan forgiveness and grants through, um, partnerships. So we're going to be discussing with DEQ.
That answered my question. Sorry, that other municipalities are talking about this, that we're not the only ones that are having this conversation. So thank you for bringing that back.
So I know originally when we made our decision about location, that was not on the table. And so now is this going to potentially impact our decision? There will not be a change in, in location at all because of more regional system. I mean, I don't know, there's lots of moving pieces. So I've been through all the discussions as to the whys and the whys not. But it seemed like very much that it wasn't going to be a regional system and now it seems like there at least is an open line of communication, so.
Bottom line is gravity still flows in one direction, right? And, and the, the current plant is at, at the lowest point with the outfall that works and it was, it was the, it was the delivery, it was rather the conveyance costs, as you recall, that, that was the, yeah.
But now we're conveying other regions and so that would be, you know, you're going to have those costs too and, and how much pipe and where the pipe and is it uphill downhill kind of stuff, so.
A scenario that Kootenay-Ponderay Sewer District has in their master planning as As um, one of their alternative scenarios, which is. From a cost standpoint of us being able to come together is is probably the most feasible of the two scenarios. That we had originally discussed, that is a scenario where they run their own force main down into our plant. So. Then they're not, they are not paying enough spying into a broader collection system. Their their own connection into the sewer treatment plant. And again, one of the benefits with Kootenay Pondure Sewer District is that. They're a lagoon base. They have the ability to hold in store when we're in those peaks and valleys. So. Reminder that we we hit those peaks where. We know we we could not take on, especially with our existing plant. Additional volume coming in from anyone else. In fact, it is problematic for us within our own jurisdiction, but they have an ability to hold. And when we hit summer months and most times of the year, we actually have additional capacity because we have to build to accommodate those peaks.
Yeah, it's a rain and snow event.
Greg, would you? You can't really reach into the future, but do you make any assumption that um? Future technologies will will kind of update incoming and and be able to process different ways or faster or more capacity within the same plant? Because I guess um, just the space that we're investing all this money in is to very is very finite space. And so, you know, I've always in the back of my head had a little bit of a concern.
I love that question and I I understood your other question also related to regionalization and. How the discussions went as to the location of the plant, you know, related to regionalization. You know, wouldn't differ much as to the location, you know, to kind of follow up on that. It does make sense to have the plant in my mind, you know, at the lowest point, just for the reasons the mayor stated. The reason I love that question related to future technologies is there's a. There's a really nice, you know, most wastewater is water. And especially, you know, in areas where water is becoming more and more of a concern and where do we find it and how do we use it? And there's those great examples in, you know, California, San Diego and these areas where. They will actually mine the sewer water uh upstream of the sewage treatment plant. Uh, you know, so you'll see these kind of uh satellite treatment plants pop up that are very easy to run, relatively efficient. They pull the water out. And then we're just moving solids and we can even treat solids in a much different way. So the answer in my mind is yes, technology will change the way we treat sewer in the future and could have a good impact in a very positive way.
Right. I know that they put their water back into their aquifer and and over. The hundreds of years that it takes to pull out that, you know, there's all the jokes about drinking their own, so.
The toilet to tap is what they call it, you know, but uh, as long as you treat it, obviously. But it's just the the mindset.
Right, no, no. Okay, all right. So, thank you.
I do want to make a comment on on this because I I think it's important that we at least keep in mind, I mean, obviously. Um, you know, the benefit of bringing more users into the system, the benefit of having the excess storage capacity. Through the the lagoons and the KPSD. Is a huge benefit to us. And then, you know, if we can. If if we can get that loan forgiveness program, which partnership with KPSD would make us competitive for that. That can be a huge windfall for us to the tune of like fifty percent of the cost of the facility. So. You know, thirty million dollars or more, right? So which would be phenomenal. But I I also, you know, want us to be cognizant of the fact that. When we do read, when we regionalize, that we are encouraging growth outside of our jurisdiction. And we are inviting. Greater impacts on our city services from our roads, to our parks, to our fire, to our police and everything else. At all the other services that we provide in the city that we're not going to be getting. We're not going to be getting revenues to support that, right? So that's on the backs of our current residents, right? And and that's that's the cost of serving outside of our jurisdiction. And I I want us to be aware of that and consider that and talk about it if we're going to go this direction. Because we will feel it, it will be felt and. And you know, it's it's one of those things that we have to weigh in and consider. And this is why, you know, regionalization is a difficult conversation.
But that, I mean, it's not like they wouldn't be paying. There would be like the wholesale model or some of their model that.
They're paying for the sewer or for the water, but they're not paying taxes. They're not supporting our general revenue or or general fund. Right?
Right.
So but but they're going to be driving on our streets. They're going to be working in Sandpoint. They're going to be going to the parks.
We drive on their streets.
They're going to be on fire.
I mean. I I'm not, I guess I'm not grasping that. We we go over and drive on Kootenay streets and we use Home Depot and we do all those things in their town and we're not paying taxes for our use there. So.
Sprawl. We're encouraging sprawl.
Okay. That I get. If that's what you're, that's that's the point you're trying to make. So.
Within the service area. I mean, there's a lot of people in North Idaho when they think of sprawl, they think of Roth from Curry types. We we don't, we're not, we're still, we've we're slightly expanding the blue line. Right? But we're not talking about going out sprawl into the Selly Valley, for example.
Which but it's not our choice. That's what I'm saying. That's not our jurisdiction, right? So right now KPSD is constrained, right? Because because of their their outfall issues, right? But as soon as they can just send all their waste to us. What's keeping them from just going as far north as they want to go?
Expanding their own. That that's a good question.
It would be through interjurisdictional agreements. So similarly, when we're providing, we have, as Greg showed on that earlier map, we thought the. We've got our water service area and we have our water service boundary. So. We don't serve beyond our water service boundary. We agreed with. Cities of Pondure and Kootenay previously, that was our water service boundary. That's our map that we sent in. But. Again, we have where we're currently serving with our area. So the same thing. The same thing with if we were to go down this road with. Kootenay Pondure Sewer District and whether those stay two separate entities or how that is structured, those are all conversations that need to be. Need to happen. Ultimately, it would be agreements with. When I say or an interjurisdictional agreements, our key interjurisdictional agreements are with our two other cities. That we're serving, whether that be water or whether that be through a regionalization of sewer. Um, our key agreements would be with those two other cities and where they want service.
So hypothetically, if we if we agreed, we had an interjurisdictional agreement with Kootenay Pondure. Uh, sewer main was installed to our water, our sewer treatment plant. They immediately go out and annex tons of Selly Valley and expand their city property to really encourage the kind of sprawl that the mayor describes. They can't do that because we have an interjurisdictional agreement that says we're serving the existing city boundaries that that we agree to.
Inner, we would have an interjurisdictional agreement that would say that similarly, let's take the example because I think water is the easiest because we serve right now up in most jurisdictions. If. Kootenay or Pondure decided they're going to annex an area in the city on that water service boundary that we showed you. Forget the challenge of what our current service area is and what we do with growth within that boundary. We don't serve outside of that water service boundary. So if if. Outside of that, they annex in an area, we don't serve it. We would be sending them. No, we no service letters.
Right. So the opportunity or the potential for sprawl is limited by ultimately what we're willing to serve for water and sewer. And and right now, that's within the city boundaries of Kootenay. So I'm I'm like, I'm just thinking about this concept of sprawl, which we hear about all the time, right? I don't think any nine out of ten sample residents are against sprawl, but we're almost containing development in the cities. By serving um, water and sewer to the cities. Which can prevent the kind of sprawl that we are really afraid of, which is the rural subdivision and the tapping of groundwater and the exhaustion of natural resources through. The kind of five acre sprawl that we're seeing right now. See, see what I mean? So in a way, we're combating sprawl by um, inviting development within the city boundaries of the three city area.
Increasing the density within the already city type boundaries.
Right.
Yeah, the mayor brings up, it's a very important point.
Right.
But the way we manage that point would be through the interjurisdictional agreements. Yep, and. And that's keep it and it's not only about, it's not only about those that impact and that growth, but it's also about our ability to serve. And again, what that does to the existing rate payers. So that's how that's how we would want to manage it. But the mayor brings up a. Very relevant point as we have growth around this. It's impacting, it impacts us and and we've been pushed on the other side that and and thinking about. What we're doing with water and what we're doing with sewer uh sewer. There's also an argument and a balance to be made that. Regionally, we're going to have to juggle with as well as, you know, do we? Do we uh, where do we serve with sewer? And should all our grow and sewer really going with water? Because when we have water growth occurring without sewer. You also have growth of septic and I know Greg loves to talk about this issue, but that's that's another, that's another challenge and something again. To consider as we're looking at our service area versus our water service boundary. If you layer that with the Kootenay Pondure Sewer District boundary, our water service area right now, that current water service area that Greg showed you. When we go north into Kootenay and Pondure, it aligns pretty well. It could need Pondure Sewer District, although our water service boundary. Um, is beyond Kootenay Pondure Sewer District. So when you again, when you're thinking about should growth pay for growth and what might those additional costs be? You're talking an area within that water service boundary that is not served by sewer. That's septic growth with water.
Maybe.
Sort of like.
Need a a document for that, or at least you didn't for a while. Anyway, whole other discussion won't bring it up. We just go West Virginia style. Just pipe it out in the backyard. Right back down to the horse barn.
To the to the mayor's, to the mayor's point again, I think too, when we get to, the question came up earlier, I forgot which one of you asked about this model that we have. And um, and I said, we have this unique model. We're not a district where we're um. We're we're a jurisdiction and we're serving another jurisdiction boundaries, not with wholesale agreements, which that's. Kind of unusual, but I suspect historically, again, when you look at leadership of the city in the past, decisions were made about us remaining in the position of being. The utility owner as opposed to handing it off to a district for some of those very concerns that the mayor's brought up.
And I mean, we could talk all night on this issue.
Yeah.
I'll carry you.
I just want to be respectful of your all's time, so I'm here as long as you need me.
I'd say this has been way more interesting than I thought it was going to be.
It always is.
Jason, you're so disappointed you missed the super tour. Corley and Post Falls and Spokane, that's actually super education.
I I do just want to underscore the point and and maybe say it from another direction is that, you know, we are. To a significant degree, the city of Sandpoint does subsidize services for. For members who live outside of the city, right? Um, that are not paying property tax but using our services. And still, as we go towards this model of regionalization, we're encouraging more of that, even if it's focusing that growth within Kootenay, within Pondure. Um, it still contributes to that problem. And and if and if we um, go this direction and. You know, essentially merge with KPSD or join with KPSD. Um, we're we're giving up any leverage that we have to try to move towards consolidation, which is a whole other conversation. Um, but but I think it it would be one that I would be interested to have uh with this group at some point. And um, and and the the benefits of that would be, you know, more equitable. Higher level of service and uh with. Without city of Sandpoint residents subsidizing those that live with outside outside of the city. Um, and and that, I mean, in my mind, that would be the most responsible way for 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 us to grow in the future. But. I know that, you know, that's a really difficult big conversation far outside of the scope of. Rates, but um. I will just leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for this discussion. Very good. Okay, so coming back to the presentation, Lawrence, like twenty now. Uh, again, similar to the water utility, we have summarized the sewer capital expenditures for the two thousand twenty two through twenty eight time period. What we're looking at there, about seventy one percent of the capital costs are related to the wastewater treatment plant, so to the tune of about sixty four point four million. Remaining system collection improvements that are that are needed, about twenty nine percent, so about twenty seven plus twenty seven million dollars. And so both sewer treatment as well as collection. Capital improvements are are listed there. When we look at the sewer, again, option one is with the revenue bonds. And so the table, again, very similar to the water, we have your existing rate revenue at about four point two to four point eight million dollars. O and M expenses, three point three to three point eight. Existing debt service, you really, I think that this year was the last payment and so you really don't now have existing debt service. Due to the CIP and the level of the CIP that we're looking at in terms of trying to execute within uh this time period, we're looking at about ninety one point one million required. When we're looking at again, where those funding sources are coming from, you can see that pie chart down below. So we have. Direct rate funding at eighteen percent, reserves twelve percent, and then net revenue at about three percent. But the vast majority of this particular uh capital plan would be funded through debt service. And in this particular option, we're looking at revenue bonds. Okay, the next one will be the the DEQ loan. What that translates to is that it would be about four point nine million annually in debt service that would be, we would be adding to the sewer utility financial obligations. And then again, is that about that table as well? You can see kind of the the trending in terms of the annual capital costs there. Two thousand twenty four starts ramping up twenty three and twenty four with the higher peaks of about twenty five, twenty six for the wastewater treatment plant. When we look at the graphic, again, that annual obligation, you can really see where the the debt service comes into play with this particular option. So two thousand twenty five is when the debt service would hit and that's in the tan bar. And then again, that line is at existing revenues. What are your existing revenues without a rate adjustment able to cover? When we're looking at future obligations, so again, O and M, rate funded system reinvestment or depreciation funding for capital. And then the new debt service that we bring onboard. That for a single family bill is running in the range of about nineteen dollars to thirty two fifty five impact per month. In that particular three year timeframe, initial three year timeframe, so thirty percent. Per year, then it can be reduced to about two point five. So really ramping up to try to get to funding that annual debt service that we would be adding to the financial obligations of the utility.
So our coop is going to gentrify the town. Pay for the two. Shit, okay, I just wanted to say that. I know it's not a new one, you've probably heard it before, Greg.
What we were talking about before also is that your existing rate levels are about sixty four twenty currently. And so as we. Increase or as we look at our needs in the future, this is really where we we have the ability to tell the story of what would potentially be happening to the EQ and and potential. You know, trying to secure some of that low interest uh money as well as possible loan forgiveness is those rates are then jumping up. And so the affordability index then becomes a consideration for forgiveness. In terms of sewer option two, again, here, we're looking at the the needs then being funded through the low interest loan for DE. The DEQ same amount, sixty one point five million dollars. However, here, there's a number of different things that are beneficial, which is a delayed repayment timeline. So your payment is deferred for two years. So it's allowing you to kind of slowly ramp up over time. Before the debt service kicks in, there's also a reduced interest rate, so from five percent to two point five percent and an extended time period, twenty years to thirty years. And so that does benefit us in the fact that it would reduce our debt service obligations from four point nine in the revenue bond section to three point one million annually with this particular. Scenario. Again, here, instead of the thirties, you're looking at more nineteen percents for the initial year first years, then followed by more inflationary adjustments once you kind of ramp up to hit that. Uh, again, new debt service, that obligation that we would be having. But much more man. Impacts, twelve dollars on a on a sample residential bill, it's about. But much more manly in terms of impacts, twelve dollars on a, on a sample residential bill, it's about seventeen in that initial three-year time period.
With this, again, going back to our discussion about adopting a model. I think when we get to the water side of things, then we look at the projections out multiple years. It probably looks out multiple years, um, most like the models that, um, that Angie has presented to you. So as we update numbers year to year, um, as, if we're moving forward, getting capital projects done on our timeline and as planned, it probably looks with what rate adjustments would be year over year, just what, what Angie has outlaid. When we get to sewer, however, we've got a lot of variables in here. So again, with our rates, you're adopting rates on a one-year basis. When you are looking at these rate studies, you're adopting a model, you're adopting a one-year rate, you're not necessarily, you have impacts. You can see your worst case scenarios, particularly with sewer, but you're not adopting these as absolute rates in years going forward. And by doing the one year and then having a model, that gives us the time to start to pursue these KPSD options and get these figured out. Applications in for DEQ funding, because I'm going to assume that's probably the route you think is more feasible when we look at that versus revenue bonds in option one. How, start getting ourselves in for the loan forgiveness, that can substantially affect what those rate increases look like in future years. In our discussions with DEQ, we have been told that there are grant loan forgiveness options up to fifty percent, potentially more of financing through DEQ. So, but again, because we've got to develop a funding plan for the system that ensures that we are adequately maintaining and operating a system. Um, we have to take a worst case scenario um, as opposed to the best case scenario that might not happen. And now we have our system falling apart and we have no funds to take care of it. So uh, I know these numbers are shocking, but when you're looking at nineteen and plus nineteen, the next year, plus nineteen, the next year, that doesn't necessarily mean that's where we land as we start to go down this path with funding.
Yeah, because it doesn't incorporate, obviously, that any loan forgiveness.
Correct.
Considerably reduce those on the second or third year.
That is correct. And we just felt at this point to assume that we're going to get something without actually having confirmation was, was not in terms of ensuring we have adequate funding for the system, the best path forward.
So uh, looking back in terms of our funding philosophy with the sewer utility and those, those various different questions that we had approached for water. Most of them are very similar for the sewer utility in terms of the option one and option two. So growth pay for growth fairly neutral. This is not necessarily being driven by new development expansion in terms of sewer, it's a wastewater treatment plant and some collection system needs that we have. We are funding the same amount of replacement reserve funding. So again, we're trying to get to that depreciation funding. So similarly in both scenarios. Jumping down to the bottom again, because it's similar, funding capital with cash versus debt, we are securing debt in both options. So again, they're both the same. We know it's, it's kind of more, more debt and so less cash. And then in terms of smoothing rate impacts over time here, again, simply because the revenue bond is much more costly and it has just different and higher costs over time. We said that's, you know, again, more, it's higher impacts or having less smoothing over time because it's immediately needing that thirty percent increases versus the nineteen percent or something other than that, if we go to EQ. The single family rate comparison, similar to water, different, some, some somewhat different utilities, but, but some common ones. You can see there Sandpoint existing is sixty-four twenty, and then we show the DEQ option as well as the revenue bond option. Again, these are current rates for the other utilities. We're showing two thousand twenty-three for the new rates for Sandpoint. Likely that some of these entities would be having rate increases as well for the next year.
I think Post Falls is doing, they're doing rate study on both.
Yeah, and wastewater will definitely be a, a larger one. They have some significant land upgrades. In terms of the uh, Cootney, Ponderay Sewer District proposal, so here, we want to just kind of loop back. So what happens should, what does it look like if we end up, you know, potentially having discussions and there's a potential partnership with KPSD? Really what that would be is that KPSD would send flows to sewer treats, to the city sewer treatment plant and pay a proportional treatment expenses. So as we go through, looking at operating costs, et cetera, what type of offsets could we have if we enter into a partnership agreement with somebody and what might that look like? That could be to the tune of about five hundred thousand to one point five million in terms of cost offsets that we may be able to have with a partner. There are no additional capital expenditures needed by the sewer fund. So again, here, they would be constructing the line to get to the, the treatment plant. And so we do not anticipate any additional capital costs in this particular scenario for the city. Obviously, the cost sharing would mitigate system-wide rate increases. We are assuming the DEQ loan in this particular example, but not any loan forgiveness. So again, we're keeping that constant. We're just the lower loan. And so what that revised rate path would look like, instead of the three years of the nineteen percent, you can see there that now those two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five could potentially be reduced an amount to, let's say, let's say the tune of ten percent per year.
I have a question on this. So um, you know, we're just using kind of a baseline sixty-four point four million dollar facility number. And is that in today's dollars?
That's actually escalated dollars.
I'm sorry.
Escalated dollars.
Okay, so like twenty twenty-seven, twenty.
I think it's twenty-four. It depends on what year the capital project are actually scheduled. So like, let's say if it was in two thousand twenty-four, we escalate to two thousand twenty-four. If, if seventy percent of the cost in twenty-five, we're like, those cost an additional year.
Okay, and then um, I have another question. It was around. Oh, so we're not, the reason why it makes sense for us to partner with KPSD is because we get more users in the system and because we get the overflow capacity using their storage, using their storage. So is that facility cost offset if we're using the Cootney, Ponderay option? Uh, in that sixty-four point four million, are we considering our own storage onsite? Or that, then is not needed if we use the KPSD option?
I can answer the, kind of the technical side of that. The storage in the lagoons that exist currently for KPSD are just for their benefit only. They, they are able to store their sewage in their ponds, so they can distribute it back to us on a schedule that we dictate. We can't actively use that storage ourselves for our existing sewer system. Nor do we have storage built in or planned for the plant that, you know, under the current scenario.
Okay, so basically, we're just not going to have extra storage unless we go with KPSD, not extra storage, but additional. Uh, I guess it is extra storage.
The um, the benefit of them having that storage is so they can discharge in those ten months that we can accept the sewage. It did, you know, it's, it's just kind of them operationally meeting our conditions. And otherwise, not very much effect at all on the plan from the existing system. So yeah, their storage doesn't benefit or help with our INI issue per se. Our INI issue dictates when they can discharge. Unfortunately, they have storage.
But if we, if we went with this option, would we not be able to use their storage? Isn't that what we're saying?
No, no. As far back, this option you might think of as kind of a wholesale option. They continue to operate entirely their system. They own entirely their system as well. They grow in their system. We charge only at the pipe that enters the sewage treatment plant. And then plus we dictate a schedule as to how they can discharge to us. That's it.
Okay, so this, so this option does not help our INI situation at all.
No, it just works around our INI situation. You know, they're fortunate to have that.
Likewise, it doesn't contribute to our INI issues.
If they didn't have the ability to store, there wouldn't even be the thought of having an agreement because we couldn't take on their sewage when we are having high flows. It's another way to, you know, it's like three different, well, it's probably nine different ways.
Okay, so we are going to switch now. We'll come back at the end and summarize kind of each of the key major areas. But we're going to switch now from the ongoing, you know, user rates, existing user rates to now the new user facility. So in terms of the, the enoughs, as we call them as well, this is a one-time fee for new connections, so there's not ongoing rates. Again, new customers connecting to the system or expanding their existing service. The key here is it represents the value or the share of system capacity that the new user will utilize. What are they requesting in terms of capacity to serve their particular property? Fees to be used for capital-related obligations only, so this is not an offset for um, ongoing operating costs. This really is a capital-related charge. And based on the two thousand fifteen Idaho Supreme Court ruling, that particular methodology has been fronted up a bit more in terms of what is acceptable. And so you, as you see in this particular table, that particular methodology is identifying the gross present day replacement value for each of the systems uniquely. Any bond, outstanding bond principal is deducted from that particular number as well as unfunded depreciation. And in this particular case, the most common definition for that, since the court did not identify that, is accumulated depreciation. So original cost accumulated depreciation for the system is considered unfunded depreciation. We then take those adjustments and we can, we result in the net system replacement value for the current year. We then, again, working with the unique systems for your particular water and sewer utilities, we identify the number of users the current system can support. So it's not what you are currently serving, but it's what can the system can basically serve connected and unconnected. That equals our total enough per ERU or meter customer equivalent, depending on what utility we're looking at. So kind of somewhat simplistic methodology, but the details behind it are, are a lot. So with the water, and so working through that methodology that we just went through, we have for the water utility, a gross replacement value of a hundred and forty-seven million dollars. We did do extra work to really identify what the city's investment has been and will be in terms of replacement liability for the transmission and distribution system. So we did use the current system plans to really get a, a good handle on that. And so a hundred and forty-seven million is gross present day replacement value. We deduct again, that outstanding debt principal, original cost accumulated depreciation to end up with about a hundred and seventeen point nine million in net system replacement value. Based on the limiting supply capacity for the water utility, essentially what we're looking at is a total system capacity of about fourteen thousand nine sixty-nine. When we compare the net replacement value to the total system capacity, what we're looking at is a total enough per meter customer equivalent. And again, that's just the size of the meter. The, the three-quarter inch meter being the, the, the top one is about seventy-eight, seventy-five per meter customer equivalent. So the larger meter that you have, the higher charge you will be assessed in terms of this particular um, value. Now, currently, your existing charge is thirty-three eighty-nine. It, it sounds like that has been in place since about two thousand sixteen. That is.
Can I pause for one second? I'm sorry. What's unsubscribed capacity?
That's just what, who has not been collected. So what you have available for connection. In terms of the, the charges currently thirty-three eighty-nine, again, meter customer equivalent, that, that was reduced from two thousand sixteen simply due to the Supreme Court ruling. So I'll get it with, we basically were using a different methodology, the Supreme Court had the ruling, so we had to take future facilities out of there, which reduced our charge to that thirty-three eighty-nine originally, really where that charge was going from the original study was about sixty-seven twenty-three. So we are kind of on the path of this charge was going to be phased in to get to the sixty-seven twenty-three. Before that ruling, once the ruling came back, it was reduced. Now we're using that ruling with better information and so that value of our system capacity is seventy-eight, seventy-five.
So we were actually at sixty-seven twenty-three. That was our net charge in, in two thousand and sixteen. And then as a result of the Supreme Court ruling to Angie's point, there was an internal, our, our finance group did a re, recalculation, taking out future capital, just looking at capital that had been completed. And so we didn't get ourselves in the same position as um, Hayden. And um, so we made an adjustment at that time, but knowing, again, that wasn't a full rate study. So that was kind of a resolving where there was a potential liability. So we kind of get back up in the range of what we originally had in two thousand and sixteen.
If you were just to kind of take that two thousand sixteen and yeah, engineering news record index it up, you would be fairly close to where you're at, about seventy-eight ninety-nine. So be, but because we stayed, we at this spot and didn't increase it, we're at, you know, again, a, a lower charge, but very similar to what kind of the calculation is coming up today.
We've had discounted connections for the last several years.
So the current is thirty-three eighty-nine?
Yes, that's correct.
Wha- what does it take to get us up to where we need to be, the seventy-eight, seventy-five? Is that something?
That would be a rate adjustment.
A full, you can't just do the enough without doing a full rate adjustment is what I'm asking. I mean, could we vote on that at the next city council meeting? Because shouldn't developers start paying right away for what they, what the actual cost is? Or is that part of the whole package is what I'm asking? Because it seems like that's a very simple thing, whereas these other things are way more, there's a lot more.
Technically, you could do it either way. So you have to, you would have to schedule a, um, put it on the agenda, schedule a public hearing. So at your next council meeting, you could vote to schedule the public hearing. Your public hearing wouldn't be until July. Typically, we're doing our fee adjustments um, and having that public hearing in August as a part of the budget process. So um, we were kind of anticipating it coming in with adopting the maximum budget and then the full public hearing. And there are second meeting in August, but if you wanted to do it sooner, you could for now.
Well, I mean, what this number tells me is that current growth isn't even fifth, like half paying for itself. I mean, this is shockingly low.
That is, that is correct.
But if that's more work for staff, we're only gaining a month, although it is a pretty significant building month. I don't know.
Yeah, the concern with this, so um, whether Greg wants to say it or me is if you are going to take up the issue of changing rates, here's what you don't want to do on something like this, particularly with the enough. You don't want to discuss it now and get to a public hearing six months from now because you're going to get a run on the bank with the um, people wanting to get all their fees paid because they can come in, turn in for all their fees now. So our volume of work actually can jump up substantially. Um, now with this at our public meeting and going forward, knowing that there's the potential of a change and people wanting to get in on these lower rates. So to your point, yes, if you're making a change, you want to do it sooner. We had anticipated in our timeline, doing it again with budget. You don't have to do it with budget, but you do have to, you'll have, we have to publish it, it would be a public hearing. So the soonest, and Melissa's our calculator, Melissa, maybe you can give me that. Soonest I would think would be, I'm going to guess the second week and the second meeting in July.
Right, like if they were to schedule a hearing that your next week, but next week. Which one one days out, so. Yeah.
We're close anyway.
Yep.
But you can, you can do it that way.
What the next slide is, is wanting to display is how those particular charges would calculate based on different meter sizes. And so I think a big question, you know, becomes, okay, what if a two-inch meter comes in, what would their particular enough speed? And you can kind of see here, in this particular case, currently paying twenty-seven thousand, the updated enough would be sixty-three thousand. Now, the, the MCE factor that you see there, I think is really an important concept because really what it's measuring is the capacity that that particular meter can pull from your system. And so if someone's coming in with a three-quarter inch meter, that's that one point oh, that's kind of what worry value waiting as that equivalent meter. If someone's coming in with a two-inch, they're asking for eight times the equivalent of that. So sometimes people say, well, boy, that's just a lot of dollars in terms of, you know, the, the larger meters. But the reality is they are taking that much more capacity of your system. And so you'd have to replace it that much more. If you have all four inch meters, you're going to be replacing, you know, system capacity a lot sooner than if you had all three-quarter inch meters. So just something, you know, to consider and why there's that differential, is this really trying to align with that capacity being requested.
Interesting example of what kind of development would require an inch and a half meter, for example, is that like a four, a fourplex, a eight-unit building? I assume three-quarters is a typical single-family home.
Yeah, three-quarter inch, even a one-inch would be a large home, say of, you know, four thousand square foot type of home for a one-inch. So residential can, you know, look for a one-inch. Uh, but three-quarter inch is typical residential. And yeah, just ratchet up from there, one and a half inch. You know, would be, you know, a multiplex, say 10 units, that kind of thing. A two inch, you know, 80 units, it moves up pretty quickly. And by the way, this is based on, you see these numbers in the building code as well, they call it fixture unit counts. What is the, uh, uh, chance that you've got all of the faucets on or the toilets flushing at the same time? So they've taken care of this a long time ago statistically, so you can find it in the building code and it kind of mirrors this. The other thing about the, well, yeah, we're about down to the end. The math behind this, this, this comes up often, holy cow, you know, 630,000 for six inch. So there's a push then, you know, by folks coming in and saying, I can't pay that or won't pay that. And so they think that, you know, two, two inches is the equivalent of a four inch. And it is not, you know, physically math, it won't pass that kind of flow. And so when they do that, you need to kind of describe that to them and point back to the building code and say, you know, fix your unit count, you know. So, uh, but anyhow, there, there's a fun equation behind this and someday I might have some props as well.
Calculate the area of the circle.
It is. R squared.
Yeah.
And so these are moving up on a square, you know.
Bring one of my daughter's stuffed animals, you bring a two inch pipe and a four inch.
She has one of those stuffed little emotion cons.
Emo poop emoji.
That's what I was thinking. Good minds think alike, Jason.
And in terms of the barometer, then obviously this moves because again, it's a calculated updated charge and moves towards more the growth paper growth on this level. Enough comparison, we have here. All, you know, kind of bunch of ranges all over the board, existing 3389. And so you're, for the comparisons that we have, that particular fee would be up to that. What I will note is we are working for a number of different entities across Idaho and fees are going up. So we have historically in the state had very low connection charges.
I want to just put out there for the rest of the council that I'm absolutely sure that we will get significant pushback from the developers. And there will be the line that always says it's cheaper, so and so, so and so. So thank you for stating that fees are going up everywhere and we're not some red herring that's just trying to stick it to the developers. Although I think that's going to play into our affordable housing piece.
And I, and I go.
Get ready.
That goes with the map that we saw Idaho was red, right? And so people are feeling the pressure and making sure that their fees and charges are set appropriately.
Right. And it's similar to like, to scale this into your own household. So I've been an empty nester for a little while and then my daughter came back home and then all of her friends come back home. So the amount of flushes and showers and toilet paper and all that kind of stuff. So it's, it's relative. So like, I have had the conversation with her and her friends. You guys need to start laying $20 bills out every now and again to do whatever, whatever. This is, and so that is.
Become red.
This is our state. This is what has happened to our state, the, the impact and the, so the infrastructure and the impact was at a time proportionate to our population. It is no longer that case. Our, our kids have moved back home and are flushing the toilets and showering more frequently. I make things really.
I like it. So switching to sewer, so again, very similar methodology in here. Again, did some work on the collection system side of things with the, with the comprehensive plan information. Gross replacement value for the system about 76, almost 77 million. Doing some deductions for debt principle and accumulated depreciation. We net out our replacement value at about $61 million. In terms of capacity, and again, that's based on the limiting treatment capacity. Our existing, or excuse me, our total system capacity is 7970. So we're currently connected to 3652 with availability for about 4,300, that's kind of what that is referring to. When again, we may do the calculation, the enough for the sewer utility is 7629, results in the 7629 per ERU equivalent residential unit. So similarly to the water in terms of what happened with the charge from 2016, it did get reduced from the 6795 to the 4413, just due to the change in methodology.
Question, so that 77 million gross replacement value, that's for the facility that we're building?
Existing. Yeah.
Working right now.
That's the unfortunate part. Yes. So as we get these projects built, we want to immediately be getting them into, into the enough. But it has to be functioning current assets in the ground before we can include them in the.
So this would be going up then, if, if we, you know, if we start building, you know, if 23, 24, 25 were, this is our nut fee because this is our facility. But our new facility goes online, let's say 2027, then we need to readjust our nuts again to.
I think you, this is a great segue to the next slide. So because of this large capital project that we have happening in the future, we wanted to not make a decision in isolation with just today and say, boy, what's going to, what could happen? Should we build this plant? Should we debt finance this plant? What would our fees look like? Now, the interesting part is you would, again, so we have the, on the left-hand side, the, the existing enough, as we had in the previous slide. The middle column is showing you what the changes are estimated to be. So you see the gross replacement value goes up to 145 million. However, your deduction, because you're debt financing it, has a larger deduction. You have to make that adjustment because what's happening is those customers are paying for it through their rates. And you can't charge them through the rates and their nuts. Okay, so our deduction for bonds increases. So as you kind of carry that all the way down, very similarly with all the other adjustments. It actually ends up being 4420, very close to your 4413 that you are today.
Wow.
Now here's the other interesting part, now get to the next column. If we have loan forgiveness or not able, needing to deduct all of that, because we don't have debt principle, right, outstanding any longer. So if we assumed a 50% loan forgiveness in that last column, so that's why you see the deduction reduced from 62 to 31. Carry that again through, your nuts would be about 6311. Assuming.
Mind.
Loan forgiveness.
Kidding right there.
Right. So that is the, that's the, that's kind of crazy part, right? So you have to be careful because yes, you're adding assets, but if you're paying with it through debt, we have to make that deduction.
We had a lot of conversation about this and that's why you see, and this is actually our only.
Degree necessarily.
That we have a, we have a staff recommendation on. We had a lot of discussion about what you don't want to see in your utility systems and with rates, particularly with nuts. You don't want to see huge volatility, if you can avoid it. If, if you have to do it, like to get your rates to where they need to be, it is what it is. And you don't want a long period of time. So you get a run, run on the bank. But what you don't want is a big jump up, a jump down, because you get the runs on the bank going all of the time. So, and that's not what this, that's not what the model anticipates is going to happen. So in this case, the staff recommendation to you would be to go with that 6311. As opposed to that maximum you could charge now on your previous slide of the 7629 to eliminate that volatility, because we do think this is where we're going to trend. And so it will eliminate some of the extremes up and down. And that was after discussion too, with, with Angie and Brooke about what you don't want is the volatility in the utility system. So that's where you see the one, you have the other, and we're saying, middle of the road would be our recommendation on, on what to do to avoid volatility.
Could be getting into trouble later on if we ended up getting some debt forgiveness. And not adjusting enough down if we're overcharging for the nuts.
So we was, on that 6311, we are assuming 50% loans, let's say loan forgiveness. So, because we're going from the 62 million to the 31.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Didn't get the loan forgiveness. See, this is where it's like.
Then that would be the case where we don't have so many unknown scenarios and we're going on unknowns, creating volatility. Now we have a known and you may choose to raise them at that time. There is not an issue with us having a lower rate, there's an issue with us overcharging.
No, that's what I'm saying. If we didn't get the loan forgiveness in say 2025, 2026, and we still owe $62 million in loans, then we'd be required to lower our rates to 4420. So now we've got the, the volatility in the opposite direction.
You'll still be adding some capital replacement for the collection system. So you are going to be adding assets that are not necessarily going to have debts, debt offsetting all of that. So you're, you are still going to be adding some, which could get you again to the 6211. There's some risk, right, in terms, in terms of that, the, the least risky is the 4420. If you would have wanted zero risk in terms of, you know, we just need to see where we're, we're at and closer, you know, firming up what we think.
The least risky from like a getting in legal trouble standpoint, but we could be underfunding our.
Yes, because really what it's all about is what is, are you using the best information that you have today? And that best information that we have today technically is the 7629. That is what we have in the ground, that is what we know is true. We're trying to be thoughtful and considerate in terms of what our rates could do in the future. And saying, you know, really, maybe we need to have something lower than that, so we don't have these peaks and valleys.
A lower basis, we are going to move forward with the wastewater treatment plant on the timeline that we have considered. And where we get at the 6311, that's based off of our conversations with DEQ. And really where we think we likely are going to land.
So we can tell people that we're going to build a new facility to lower their nut fees. Makes a lot of sense.
But we're going to tell them that we're going to get.
We'll eventually get there.
Yeah, if we get, ironic thing is.
What's good is bad.
With the debt relief, um, it helps, it, it helps in our rates, it doesn't help with the nuts.
Yeah, it's passing more of the cost on to.
New. Yeah. But for our existing, they benefit from all of that forgiveness.
That's a fun stuff consideration. On the comparison side of things, so again, here, what we've actually grabbed is that 6311 staff recommendation. So you have the 4413 today, so moving up a couple.
That's interesting, because I've had several developers say, well, we're going to go build in ponderay. It's just too expensive. I'm like, but they're more expensive.
They're served by the district, they are more expensive.
Go build a ponderay.
Would, could the ponderay be paying enough to stand point under a regionalized, regionalized sewer system?
That would be something for discussion, I think, in terms of the negotiations.
Have to be a portion.
To the new treatment plant and that they're buying into a new treatment plant. So probably again, we have the split out where they're not buying into our collection system, so.
They're helping pay for debt service, the, the assumption would be that they would help you pay for that debt service, so some of that cost relief. Okay, we're getting there. How are we doing? We're a little over. Okay, so now we're going to kind of start summarizing in terms of the, the revenue requirement, the new user facility fees and, and some of the options. So in terms of water, the revenue requirement first task that we said, okay, overall revenue needs, the option one that we had there is to exclude the, the new development expansion projects, excuse me, to include all of them, sorry. Option one is all, all in at 6.5% per year. Is that what we're looking at? The option two would be excluding the new development expansion projects. Really, when you're looking kind of at the two together, it looks to be about additional one, 18, 120 per month average for all capital projects. The difference there. The new user facility fee there, we have shown the calculated value at 7875 per meter customer equivalent. Considerations there for the preliminary results that we shared this evening. I don't know if you want to just pause or can we keep on going, then we'll look back, okay. Sewer overview in terms of the options here. Revenue requirement, option one is the revenue bonds, 30% increase. Again, that's just the higher, higher cost, higher requirements in terms of the, the overall needs for debt financing. Option two is the DEQ loans does not include loan forgiveness at 19% for those initial three years. Again, it's really just due to the utility facing those larger increases in both the collection and the wastewater treatment project needs. If we look at obviously moving forward with some type of partnership with KPSD. The alternative there would look more like, again, 19%, so it's really what's happening is we're narrowing in on a minimum really requirement of that 19% to get things moving. And then depending on how things start firming up, that's going to depend on what 2024 and forward will look like. This is just basically making some assumptions today in terms of what that could look like. Really, as we start firming up, this is when we want to start updating that, that toolset and financial plan to say, okay, what do we know? Do we know certain loan forgiveness? You know, then we can start working it in the model and making those adjustments for the future years. But because again, we got to start, it's looking like that 19% is where we'll need to start to get there. When we did talk about the DEQ loan forgiveness, I think it was the affordability index of about 2% median household income that they look at to kind of start triggering that loan forgiveness, that might be in the 75, $77 range. So, so really what they look at is what is the city willing to do to get to meet their particular needs? Once you get to that affordability, you know, threshold that you're starting to pop over it, then you start triggering that potential for loan forgiveness. And so it's kind of like, we're doing something to show that we're serious. And, and hopefully by showing that, we will get some of that loan forgiveness as well.
We're doing something to show we're serious and we don't have the capability of doing anything more.
Right.
So that's again, where we, you're adopting a year at a time and you're adopting a model. And on sewer, as we get moving forward, as we've discussed, there's a lot of moving parts. So I think it becomes important in this conversation that, that even the year two and the year three, as we move forward with loan applications now reaching forgiveness thresholds, things can look differently than what we see here. It's a worst case scenario.
And that DEQ funding, is that the state revolving fund or is that a separate fund?
It's the state revolving fund and what they're doing and is that instead of doing traditional grants to fund projects, what they're doing is basically it, at the end of the day, it becomes a grant, they're doing loan forgiveness. So all of this infrastructure funding that's flowing for it, come down from the federal level, it's flowing through the revolving loan funds.
And so is this, they have like, what, 400 million in there annually?
It is significantly larger. We've been told to get our application in this fall. So that's where these decisions are really critical. We're on a timeframe with decisions because of infrastructure dollars coming in for us to qualify for those dollars. We need to make some decisions and get applications in this fall. We may not get funding first round, but now we're in the cutting and as they get additional funding, the way that it typically works with these federal dollars that flow through in the state level is through a competitive criteria, spreading funding around the state, they'll do a funding threshold to align. If they get additional dollars, that line drops, but you've got to be on that list to get that funding.
You're doing all the right things to set yourself up for, for getting, getting that money. And then on, on the sewer side, the new user facility fee, the staff recommendation is 6311, obviously it's separate.
There is another funding program at the federal level too, and we didn't include in here because we've been advised go through. Because of the amount of federal funding that's flowing through the revolving loan fund program, that is the best place for us to start. But there is directly at the federal level funding through a WIFIA program too. So even outside of loan forgiveness, there is another program that offers other opportunities too. So we're just going to have to get really aggressive and pursuing a lot of opportunities. And it's not a clear picture at this point, we're just going to have to get ourselves into the funding stream to get clarity. Am I missing any points?
No, that covers it.
Okay, so we kind of summarized each of the utilities as well as the nuts. And so next steps again, would kind of probably be some, some direction for the. And so next steps again would kind of probably be some some direction for the rates to adopt using the current fee schedule. So as Jennifer had mentioned previously, so that we're not confusing the drivers of the impacts. And you know, is it really overall need or is it really rate structure that's causing the overall rate impact for each customer? We really are looking at keeping the current fee structure for this initial go around in terms of overall, you know, revenue adjustments. And then we'll come back at a later date and address cost of service and then the rate redesign restructuring. So again, trying to keep them a little separate, just so we can be very straightforward and and transparent with what we're trying to accomplish today.
So when when do we need to make a decision on the?
I think what would be, I think what would be helpful for us is if we could get some staff direction on on options, what you would like us to bring back to you for consideration for a public hearing at a full council meeting. Again, you aren't making any decisions today, but some direction to us. If you if you we've missed something, you want us to look at something else or you want to look at a different timeline than what we were thinking of. That kind of gives us a sense of timing of when we're coming back to you at a council meeting. And with what we could come back and you could have this whole discussion again on two different options. Or if we have staff direction that really the notion, keeping with our historic policy direction around growth, paying for growth. If that's still the direction we're going, then we probably come back to council with the option that reflects that historic direction. Or maybe as you're looking at water, you look at that and say, it's not that much of a difference. So when we're comfortable, something different.
I look forward to our next meeting where we talk about structures, rate structures. Because I think that's an important part of this, right? I mean, if we go across the board with this proposed ra- rate increase without also talking about how that might apply differently to different types of development, is that an incomplete decision then or?
No, no, not necessarily. So in the rate study process, so the revenue requirement defines that overall pie. So the the overall pie, depending on what you select, that overall pie is not going to change between cost of service and rate design. It's just going to be how it's sliced up and how it's collected and what customer classes. What we would recommend here again, just to keep things clear, is that we identify, we have an overall revenue need. And so let's select the preferred alternative for that revenue need in terms of moving forward and keep it with your existing rate. So then again, everybody kind of gets that same overall. So then everybody gets that overall similar impact. So everybody's going to see the same results. Then we can start talking about, okay, should we be adjusting cost of service equity wise or rate structure wise to better align with our objectives that we're trying to accomplish? But that's that a different discussion. We would still develop it around the same size of the pie. It's just how you're slicing the pie and who you're actually collecting it from is going to be a little different. But it's not inequitable to apply it across the board. Because again, it's we're saying, here's our overall costs and need. We're going to apply it to all of our customers equally with the current rate structure.
And and is, is this a staff recommendation for option two for both of these or is it just?
For the sewer just because of what we knew from conversations and that volatility issue. It's very unique to sewer and it doesn't exist with water.
So that's what you're asking us for is to pick the options that.
Give us some direction on what you would like to see come back again. It's not a vote, but if we're hearing from you on kind of what you want to see, that gives us some sense of what to bring back to you for a council meeting. So you're not doing a repeat of all of this again.
Well, I I personally for water like option one, why not do all as opposed to parsing it out? I mean, it's not that much of a difference and.
An option two for sewer.
Why do you like, why do you like option one?
Because it's all of the, isn't that all of the projects, option ones, all of the projects? Right, because it's all, it's everything. It's and it's not that much more.
There's the, I I think the maybe Shelby, I don't want to speak for you, but you're, this is go back to what he said earlier about the philosophical arguments against option one and for option two. Just the idea of are we encouraging density, are we encouraging sprawl outside of Sam Point city limits by investing in development expansion now instead of requiring future to pay for it? So that's, that's the challenge. Again, it's a difference of a dollar a month. But there's a philosophical question about what are we incentivizing by choosing out over option two? Again, this is something that I I personally, this is something that I think each of us needs to consider ourselves rather than in this setting debating this, right?
Right.
But if we want to avoid that debate in a public setting, we make a staff recommendation. So we're only presented with option one.
Well, we're still in, we're still, we're this full ongoing on our YouTube channel and everything.
No, I totally get that.
If there is like a concurrence in a staff direction, only come back with one option, then that gives us a sense of what to come back to the council meeting. If not, if it's, there's much more time to review and discuss, then we'll come back with the two options and council will.
I'm just Kate, I recommend option.
I'm going to volunteer that I'm a slow processor, so I can't go through all this and then just decide right here on the spot because I'm going to wake up in the morning and go, well, I forgot to think about that. And what about this scenario in my head? So I'm going to be neutral, to be honest, and just give myself an opportunity to process it. And if I have more questions, come and ask. Yeah, great.
Jason, can I ask you a question about your choice there? Because it sounded to me, it has sounded to me tonight, like you're very much into the philosophy of growth, paying for growth. So why, why would you choose option one?
I'm also into the philosophy of concentrating growth within city limits and things that we can do now to lay the groundwork for future growth to happen where services are available as opposed to where they're not further out in in the county. I think that's, that's the bigger philosophy that I have. And I think.
Right, but but that would happen under either of these scenarios.
It would, but we're, we're, again, I I haven't fully digested your argument with regards to how this future growth that we might be laying the groundwork for will impact other city services. So that's not, I'm not saying I'm voting for that tonight. We can't vote for that tonight. So that's something I want to think more about as well and maybe talk to you about outside of the setting. But that, but my instinct is we we should lay the groundwork for growth within the urban areas in Bonner County. Because there's so much pressure in the rural areas of Bonner County that we can do something now, make an investment now that makes it a little bit easier for development to occur where development should occur, in my opinion.
Well, and it's just exploring that option fully. Is that correct? What they're bringing back to us, I mean, to really, you know, and I concur with Jason too, is that I think we should look towards the future and look at that option. I mean, it says option.
To be clear on it, with either of these options, our overall water service boundary, we're not changing our water service boundary with either of these these options. Under, under the growth projects, the growth projects and maybe it might help to go back to that, that's why we're back now. The growth projects that we're talking about, when we go up north, you're talking about within our existing service boundary, but beyond currently where we're, we're serving now. But it's within our water service boundary. The only area where that could change and council may choose to make a change in the future would be on the west side into our own ACI. Because currently our own ACI, other than wholesale agreements, is not in our existing water service boundary.
And and maybe another point to touch over again, just a reminder as we're kind of summarizing this is how we would, if if we were to choose option two, how growth, what are the options on the table? How how would growth pay for growth? What does that look like? And and the one advantage to option one that I can see here that I think Kate's getting to is that just the simplicity of it. I mean, if it's just a rate, everybody pays a rate. You know, if you're hooked up to the system, you pay rate and it's just simple. Whether you're new, whether you're a long time customer or whatever. So and and that's, that's an ease of burden on staff and an ease in burden of burden on developers and on anyone else who's, you know, involved at any level with development here. So so I can appreciate the simplicity and how that there, there's an ease there, less time, less, less staff, all that stuff. But and then, you know, but if if we could just briefly again, review how those costs would be, how how it'd be funded under option two, the the growth portion.
I don't believe that's been developed at this particular time, right?
Well, there's, there's a range of options.
Yeah, options that would be out there could be impact fees, adoption of impact fees. It could be an LID is created and we've done that in the past. So our most recent LID, and it's been quite a few years, but it was for extension of water and sewer dis- uh, services up north Boyer to the fairgrounds and the developments in that area. That's the last time we did an LID and that one's still active. I think we're still collecting on that.
Can you tell us what LID stands for?
Local Improvement District. So instead of a single development, having to come in and bear all of the cost, you pick, you have an area and so all of the development in that area, all of the property owners in that area is paying their fair share. And so again, with a local improvement district or with impact fees, it is only the jurisdiction that that is the primary jurisdiction could collect those. So for example, in that area for expansion of services within the water service area, but beyond our existing service in Ponderay, the city of Ponderay would need to implement an LID or use grant funds or impact fees. They would need to implement, they would collect them and then remit them to our utility as opposed to us doing that. One thing is when you are, when you say growth has to pay for growth and it, now you have kind of your a lay of options and you don't exactly know how that is going to, how that is going to work. And when you have a small project, you're doing a small extension. So an LID is a clear source to go. That's easy when we start talking a larger water service area within our boundary. You might see a combination of these things or surcharges added. You could see a combination of of funding mechanisms used. In fact, when we had a conversation with the mayor of Ponderay about this, one of, one of the points that he brought up is they have ARPA funds that they haven't allocated yet and they could allocate ARPA funds for service extensions. Another option, I'm just going to throw that out there for council direction to be for us staff to if you're concerned about achieving maybe a better balance in growth, paying for growth. And as we're looking at that north Ponderay areas, maybe you want us to go do another slice and dice on this a little bit further. So it just didn't make sense for us to go through multiple options. So maybe there's some projects where you you want us to sit and go through and look at. Maybe are there some projects that should come in, some projects go out and we work with Ponderay on some of that before we come back. But we just didn't want to go down the path of handing you five options today when you're already trying to absorb or to you on on the different pieces. But that could be a staff direction. I just throw out to the council.
I sure like the idea of ponder it, throw on in some ARPA money.
That that could reduce, for example, that reduces burden on existing rate pairs. So it, when you are thinking about this, you're, you're moving your, I I that's where we really liked and tried to build on Angie and 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 Brooke's initial kind of barometer that they were using. You're, we've given you kind of this and this and you can come back at us and say, we want to see something more in the middle one way or another. And we can do our best to tackle that and bring that back to council.
Again, this is one of the best workshops.
I wouldn't mind seeing what the ARPA funds. Good show.
If we look at something different on water rates with that, then do you want, would you want to see this end of the spectrum of maybe a more middle end of the spectrum and the other end of the spectrum? Do you want us to come back with like a three option or?
The crazy thing about the water rates ones that we're talking about, the difference between a dollar seventy a month and seventy five cents a month or two dollars and ten cents a month.
Yeah.
It's, I I don't expect, I think we're going to know more about the impact of this decision than anybody else who didn't sit through this three hour meeting on YouTube, which is probably nobody else. I monitor the YouTube channel.
All twelve of them.
We can come back with both of these at a council meeting and we can have a conversation and determine whether there is some other middle option that is viable that we come back with too. If that is satisfactory to council, we can do that on the water side. Greg's wondering what I've committed us to.
I like this argument over here.
So I don't know how much is is the middle of a dollar.
Right. Yeah, because the enough itself doesn't change.
Right, we're now exploring options for the water nuts, from what I understand. And that's going to be the the big hot one that we decide on.
And so as the average user that's, that's flushing the toilets, drinking the water, that's looking at this, that's not, maybe not going to be here, not paying attention. The the best, most consistent predictable walk up to their rate changes is going to be the best course. Because there's going to be more difficult, harder conversations that might be complicated, that we should make the simple ones as simple as possible and the complicated ones as clear as options as we can come up with. Okay, so that's my direction to staff. Simple stuff, simple, compartmentalize the complicated ones with the clearest of two options.
Yeah.
Okay.
And sewer option two.
So why we're seeing, so sewers.
So we're trying to make it as simple as, as we tried to make it as simple as possible. And I will be honest, when we came into this presentation, it would have been just as easy for us to throw out the revenue bonds altogether because, right? Who would really choose that option? But we left that in there because I think it is really a good example of the amount of work that's gone into this. And so we felt at least for this workshop, it was important for you to understand where we started from, what all we've considered. That this wasn't just a, we went for the easy path forward and went, we need to increase rates. There was a really an awful lot of consternation in our walls and many meetings and a lot of time. And I have to give much due credit for, to Greg and Sarah for the amount of deep dive they have done in this with Angie and Brooke and and their team back and forth and diving through the other options. So we suspected going back to a council meeting, revenue bonds is out, but we wanted to show it at this. In case you want this to come back, because I think it's part of the important story you tell the, if the public needs to know the work that went into this. Because we have taken this very seriously as to what a large rate increase this was. To the point of there was even a discussion, well, we can't even, we cannot do this sewer treatment plant. And we're, you know, we're going to have to look at a phased plant. And where we landed with this was me talking with the mayor in direction back to staff saying, no, we will not come in there without wastewater treatment plant because this has been something the public's been talking about. It's been important to the council. We had a timeline with this. No, the plant goes in and this is why you haven't seen a plant go forward as much as there's much debate about the city just not caring about a plant and not doing it. This is the very reason. the city just not caring about a plant and not doing it. This is the very reason that a plant hasn't gone forward sooner. It's the cost of the plant and the concern about the impact on citizens. But again, the timing with dollars right now with infrastructure funding, we're also at a time that if we're going to leverage other dollars, which we have to in order to make this affordable for our community, now's the time that we are in the best position to do that.
Yeah, I really appreciate all your hard work. So I can't imagine looking at all these numbers every day. Sorry, you're a saint. Yeah.
Um, I guess I do have a little bit more opinion because I'm way more familiar with the sewer stuff because I've been on board with that for a long time. And the direction I would give staff, um, I think you guys have already done a great job. I'd like to see both options come back just because I think we will have more public exposure at the meeting. But I would like to see um, very concise and clearly defined reasons. But I think for the public, they're going to look at the dollar sign and go, well, I know which one I pick because they don't have the background. So I think it will be easier for them to accept the rate change when they see what the other option is. So you know, um, I don't know, I do some horrible metaphor, but I'll leave that for Andy.
Yeah, you are right on. Seriously. I want to, I want public to thank us for choosing only a nineteen percent.
I'd rather have my dog. Okay, here you go. I'd rather have my dog pee on the floor than vomit on the carpet.
Oh dear God.
There you go.
Mine are better than that.
Yeah, they're way better. It's the only one I could come up with, you know? We're all in the sewer mode here, but I didn't go human, you know? I went dog.
I think the other barometer that would be helpful for us because there is a significant amount of work with this is if the alternative with Kootenay Ponderay Sewer District, and again, this isn't the decision, but if this is something you feel we should continue to move forward with vetting, I think that would be helpful for staff with some direction because it is, this is, that is a lot of work too.
Well, I think just because of what the numbers are on paper that, that it makes some sense to at least tread a little further down that path. And if it just starts looking like there's no light at the end of that tunnel, we can turn around and come back. I don't know. It seems like this has been a, oh, we're going to do this and we bought the Frisbee property. And now we're not going to do this, we're going to do something else because things run downhill and but now we're kind of in a, not the same direction, but sort of the different scenario direction with looking at that. So.
I think what ended up happening with Kootenay Ponderay Sewer District is um, our permit came up for renewal for our wastewater treatment plant. At the time, theirs was enough and everything was looking fine. And so ours came up and we went down our path. And then theirs came up and.
Then red flags went up. So I mean, historically, I don't, I think it's kind of irrelevant what happened historically. If we can make if it's a positive outcome for both and there's an advantage for us, then I think it's a path worth going a little bit further down. But if we get a little bit further down, like I said, like doesn't make sense for us, then we could stop. If there's just too many cooks in the kitchen and 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 agreements can't be made that are reasonable, then even that number that says this is what we could do may not happen because of different personalities.
So hopefully the direction is as clear as our water, not our sewer.
Not our, not our pre-treat.
We don't want pre-treat, we want post-treatment.
Is bed time now? Our timeline so that council understands is um, probably to come back with this at um, your first council meeting in July. Your, your second council meeting in July is when we're full budget and you probably don't want to do this conversation, the rest of our fees and maximum budget all at one meeting. The other thing I'm going to give council heads up on and, and I want to do it when they're in the workshop and this is public too, is also be reaching out to council to get some sense going into July and August or that you want to stay with your two meetings a month or whether you're open to um, whether you are open or available for special meetings. And I know none of us really like them in the summer. We've done them in the past because we've had to break down budget discussions for multiple meetings. Over the last couple of years, we've been able to stay to our two meetings a month. But a factor that you have this year is you've got four public hearings coming through for um, planning and zoning, coming through planning and zoning to council. So you've got four public hearings in the time you're also doing budget. And I just know for all of you, what the tolerance is of getting numbers and us going through detail of budget, public hearings as well. So I will reach out to each of you individually about special meetings that you might want to think about. Because here's really the choice I think you're going to have to make for some meetings in July and August is do you want super long meetings? Cause I think you're going to have a couple of those. Or would you rather have a couple more frequent meetings and us break this up a little bit because that's coming at you in July and August?
I just don't see you guys often enough. So let's do it. Let's go.
I'd rather be broken up, yeah.
The second meeting in August, which is the uh, which is your uh, budget adoption, fee adoption meeting. I did communicate back to um, our planning and development that came up in leadership today that absolutely no public hearings, that meeting, even if it means developers and projects are waiting a couple more weeks, we can't do it. So we have too much with budget. We've got these fees coming in with other fees. We cannot do that at that second meeting in August. And when we do a public comment on budget and fees, it's at that meeting. So.
So will most of budget be in July like it has been? Or is that going to go into the first week in August?
Yeah, so typically I'm, we cover that max budget and overall budget. You're getting the budget document at your second meeting in July. And then we're doing kind of that longer discussion and break down that first meeting in August. But I believe it is the first meeting in August where I know you have two public hearings. So you, we might be able to do it with one extra meeting. I just bring that up because I'm afraid otherwise you're looking at the potential of really long nights. And I've committed that we've never, since I've been here, we've never had a meeting that went fast.
Don't say it.
Eleven, eleven. Have we gone to eleven? No, that's the, I was not here when that happened. We've never gone past eleven. I'm not even sure ten thirty.
Close.
Shorter times. Yeah.
Sorry, I know it's summer.
Cause I'm old.
Less young girlfriend, not all.
One last thing before we wrap up tonight, we do have an announcement from Fire on a Project. So Glenn's been listening all to fees tonight and wanted to let you know about what Fire is going to be doing with the training exercise down at City Beach.
So thanks for your time. They say you learn something every day.
How'd that go?
I learned something. All right. Uh, so tomorrow and Friday, we are putting on a rope rescue class. It's tree rescue class. So tomorrow afternoon, after lunch, we will be at Farm and Park. Doing some ascending, descending out of the trees. Uh, we'll be rescuing some people out of the trees.
You need some victims? I got some teenagers.
Perfect. Um, so and then on Friday, we will be over at Katie's office at uh, Alpine Family Medicine over by the Charter School.
Fifteen fifty-three, fifty-five Ontario.
Yes, perfect. Uh, we've prepped two trees there for doing what they call spar work. So for arborists and that are taking trees down, they get stuck. All this stemmed from a rescue that I had two years ago over on uh, uh, Lakeview, uh, rescued a guy about eighty feet in a tree. It broke his femur in five places and arm too. And then it was, I think it was only a week after that, we had a parachuter here in town who crashed through a tree canopy and end up landing on a roof. So that sparked us to determine we needed a little extra equipment. So we, we got the equipment I was supposed to put on the class because I'm the only one in the department trained to do such a thing. Uh, which is not safe for me. Uh, and then COVID came. So teaching a class was not the best. And now, now we have the time to teach class and now I am incapacitated. So uh, I have my partner Jim Thone, Rescue Northwest that I work with on the side. He's coming up and teaching the class. And if anybody has time to come out and see what we're doing.
Can you give us the times again, please?
So it'll be noon afternoon at Farm and Park. And it'll, it'll probably go till about four or five o'clock. And then the rest Friday will be pretty much all day at Alpine Family Medicine. So it's a combination of doing rope work and spur work. And don't worry, we won't put spurs on and destroy all the trees apart. We will have professional harvests with us too. So Ty Oliver, uh, of Oliver Tree Service will be part of the class and he will also be participating in the class. And he's donated all his time and crew and equipment to prepping the trees. So we owe a special thanks to him. He said he loves us. It's like, perfect. We like people who love us. So, so I, I hope to see some, somebody there if you can stop by, ask questions. If you want, we'll strap you up in a tree and we'll come get you. Yeah, thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, uh, this meeting is now adjourned at eight seventeen.